We are live now, Darren.
Thank you.
Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Education Work Session Agenda, Wednesday, May 5th. The Finance and Ops Committee, Operations Committee is first on the agenda. We will be covering two items. The 2021 to 22 budget and the four-year, four-year plan. Covering both the general fund and the school-based budget. Dr. Cash, I give you and the CFO of the floor.
Okay, thank you, colleagues. Good evening. Colleagues, we have an injury to our inimitable CFO today, our esteemed CFO. And if any of you ever know about, have ever had a serious back injury, they're some of the toughest. So he has a fairly significant back injury. We'll look and see if he needs treatment tomorrow, but Jeff won't be with us this evening. And but is very capable, number two, Jim Barnes is here with us, and we appreciate that. These are two very important items as we head toward the final round, if you will, or final leg of the hearings and information sessions with you about our 2021, 2022 general fund budget and our school-based budgets. But the first item on the agenda is our four-year plan. And so both of these items are before you. You have a number of materials before you, and Jim Barnes is going to give us a high-level presentation first, and then we'll have our usual robust discussion. So thank you, and Mr. Barnes, go to it.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Yeah, I have pretty big shoes to fill tonight with Jeff being out, so I'll give it my best shot. Edmire, would you call up the presentation, please? Before we get into it, I do have Maria Wood here with me, who does the school-based budgets. And I'm going to go through this presentation. It's very high level, as Dr. Cash says, and the first four of six slides are the most important. So, Edmire, if you could please go to the first slide? Or the next slide? There you go. A few things to point out here. This document, this slide ties our current year budget and projections into both next year's draft budget and the four-year plan. The first two columns, what they show was our adopted budget for this year, along with an up-to-date projection for the actual results of this year. And what they show is the dramatic turnaround from when we met a year ago to our projected actual results for this year. A couple of things to note. Our revenues will come in right as budgeted, and I'm looking at the first two columns now. Our expenditures will show a dramatic decrease largely due to the COVID closures and expenditures such as transportation, substitutes, overtime, teacher ancillary, all those operating costs that were reduced as a result of the school closure. What they net out to is when we adopted the budget last year, we thought we'd have a $50 million deficit, and we're going to use reserves to cover that. The most up-to-date projections show a true $19 million surplus. So a big change from when we met a year ago. The second thing that I guess I want to point out is if you look at the column in green, the draft budget, this is very high level, that you received, show revenues of $943 million, just a tremendous increase in state aid, our expenditures of $972, and we are in the draft budget that you receive, we are using $29 million in reserves. The thing to point out there, though, that's a one-time impact of how transportation aid works. You receive the aid based upon the expenditures in the prior year. So last year, our transportation expenditure, or in the current year, our transportation expenditures were greatly reduced. That translates into much less transportation aid in next year's budget. But that's a one-time event, and it will correct itself beginning in 2022 and '23. The third thing I'd like to point out are the state aid, state aid, the decrease or increase from the prior year. The recently adopted state budget includes a large increase in foundation aid for next year, along with the fully funding of foundation aid going forward. So we're going to get like a $72 million increase in state aid. Now, a question that I might address a little bit later, but I want to, I know it's on some of your minds. How can a $72 million increase in state aid only translate into a $41 million total revenue increase? And it really is itemized on page five of the budget document that you have, where we break down the revenues line by line. But in summary, we did get $72 million increase in state aid, but it's offset by a $21 million less use of reserves in this year's budget, along with the one-time $29 million federal CARES Act that was in the current year budget. So those two offset the $72 million increase in state aid. The last thing I want to point out here in the four-year plan, it's the last three columns, is that the increase in state aid and the phase in, the full phase in the foundation aid have basically corrected our structural deficits, and we are projecting surpluses for the next three years out. The state aid numbers at the bottom, you see they, the change, $53 million increased in '22, '23, and then they go down. That's, the $53 million is composed of the increase in foundation aid plus the increase in transportation aid that we'll receive. In '23, '24, that is due to the increase in foundation aid. And '24, '25, we budgeted very conservatively, that decrease of $7.8 million. We tie the building aid, which is part of the total state aid package, to our debt, to our debt goal. And our debt, as you'll see in the expenditure portion, is going down. So we'll receive that much less in state aid, building aid. So that's sort of a high-level tie-in of what's going on this year, our budget that you've received in draft form, and how it ties into the four-year plan. Edmire, could you go to the next slide, please? This next slide just touches on the huge impact that the recently announced federal aid packages have on our district. The first point, foundation aid increased as we saw in, for next year, and that's reflected in next year's budget. Plus, in the outer years, '22, '23, and '23, '24, it's the full phasing of what we are entitled to in foundation aid, and that provides for a structurally balanced budget through this entire four-year plan. That is really great news and big news for the district. Second point here, just to touch on the federal stimulus aid under the CRRSA Act and the ARP Act for March. Those amounts are not recorded in the general fund. They will be recorded in the grants fund. So when you're reviewing the draft budget documents, keep in mind that the $289 million that we're receiving in federal stimulus aid is not in those documents. The table that's included within this page just shows the various federal stimulus packages that we've received in the current year and what we're, will receive next year. And an important thing to keep in mind on top of the amounts is the end date, the last column. That is when that money has to be expended by. The $289 million is not included in the general fund, and planning is in the process now on how those funds will be used. Edmire, could you go to the next slide, please? Thank you, Edmire. Some key assumptions that underlie the documents that you received. State aid increases are driving the much roguier financial picture. Secondly, it's a maintenance of effort budget. This does not include, again, any of the federal stimulus money, nor does it include any exorbitant new spending requests that require the superintendent's approval. This year was a difficult year for the budgets and the school-based budgets because of the cyber attack, because of the loss of historical data, and Munis not being available throughout the district. Usually at this point, each department will have gone into Munis and entered very detailed budget requests. That was not possible this year. So the budget department worked with them in various ways to get as much detail into this budget as possible. And where that was not possible, we put in placeholders that will be replaced with detailed data later in the budget process. The big changes from the current year to the draft budget you received, charter school tuition is down $2.4 million. The draft budget you received includes two charter schools that are budgeted to close. That'll save about $12.6 million from what would have been a $15 million increase in charter tuition. But to offset that in the hopes that a lot of those children and students attend Buffalo School, we added $3.5 million into the school-based budget, School 68. And secondly, we added $6.5 million into our contingency line, just to cover any and all centrally allocated cost or unanticipated costs for bringing those children into the fold. The budget also includes $3 million in eMERGE set aside. eMERGE is a project code that we set up to account for all COVID-related expenditures. So that is in the draft budget numbers. Now, a note on that. Those costs, while they're currently being accounted for in a project, eMERGE, we may start thinking about building them into our operational costs if they become mandatory or necessary in the out years. The draft budget includes a $7 million reduction in health insurance based on recent trends. And it also includes $3.3 million reduction in debt service. That's just based on our debt repayment schedule. Again, the federal stimulus aid is not included in the general fund budget. The school-based budgets, you have the summary sheets for each school, and in total, they are not fully allocated within the draft general fund budget that you have, and that is the basis of some of your questions that I've seen so far. However, the total dollar amounts of those school budgets are contained within that draft budget that you have. We use placeholders, and we're pretty good at estimating the total cost for each segment. It's just we did not have time before tonight to allocate and reconcile our Munis budget to the school-based budgets, but all those dollars are in that draft budget that you Edmire, could you please give me the next slide? Some key historical trends that we track because they drive our expenditures so much. These are both based on pupil counts and pupil versus staffing counts. The table to the left shows the cumulative change in pupil counts for the district, for charters, and overall for the Buffalo area. The red line shows the change, and I'm sorry, I can barely see this, shows the change from '06, '07 to the current year in the pupil count for Buffalo schools. It's down almost 5,000 kids during that period of time. The blue line shows the change in charter enrollments over that same period of time. They are up almost 4,000 students over that same period of time. The gray line is the total pupil counts in the Buffalo area. So you take our 5,000 drop in Buffalo students, plus the 4,000 increase in charters, and you're down about 1,000 students overall in the Buffalo district. The table to the right charts Buffalo K through 12 beds enrollment data versus our general fund FTEs. You've seen this chart several times. The axis to the left are the actual counts, and the axis to the right is the change. The blue line shows our beds counts. Again, down by, let's say, 3,000, while our FTEs are up almost 4,000. So we certainly have invested in the staffing to meet our student needs, and that gap continues to grow with enrollment going down and staffing going up. Edmire, could you take us to the next slide? This next slide just provides a little more detail in historical comparisons for the revenue portion of our budget. I won't spend much time on this, but you have some actual data in the first column. Then you have our original budget in the second column, and the third column is our projected actual revenues for this year. The yellow column right in the middle is our proposed budget. Again, for a breakdown of those revenues, line by line source, if you look at page five of the draft budget. The next column just shows the percentage of each revenue item to the total budget. We get 83% of our aid from the state. That's the big factor there. The next two columns just show the changes from the projection, the actual projections on how we're going to end this year. The last two columns show the change from our original current year budget. One thing to note there, and I know it was a question that we answered. If you look at our projected actuals in quarter three, 544 million in foundation aid, the state then reduced their commitment to us by $29 million. That number also appears down in the non-state aid called federal disaster relief. So what the state, what the federal government gave us, the state basically reduced our state aid for. In the proposed budget, the state not only makes up that $29 million reduction, but gives us an additional 40 million or so in foundation aid. So the state really came through for next year and the years out. Edmire, I presented, we're presenting this to give you a big picture view, but with a little more comparisons, and if you have any questions on any of this data, we're more than happy to answer it. Edmire, could you turn to the last slide, please? This last, we just looked at the revenues from a historical perspective and some comparisons. Now, these are our major expenditure categories, and the column headers are the exact same as the revenues. There's not much for me to add to this slide. I think the numbers are pretty clear. Well, I guess one thing to note in the yellow column in the proposed budget, if you look at compensation, that's composed of a couple of things. One, a regular contractual step longevity increases that we calculate and build into the next year's budget, plus potential compensation for additional teachers for the Westminster School. So that's a reason for that extraordinary, a larger-than-normal increase. And then if you look at transportation, if you look at our original budget column in blue, we were planning on $58 million for a full year, all in person. The actual projections in the next column, we'll only spend $29 million. That's reflected in the lower aid next year. We get reimbursed on that $29 million. But what we put into next year's budget in the yellow column is a full-year transportation for all students, and that goes up to $61 million. So that's all I wanted to present on these slides. Again, a very big-picture view of the current status and the tie-in with the four-year plan. So thank you for your time and patience.
Thank you, Jim. Well done. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions on the four-year plan? Hearing no questions? Oh, oh, sure. Sorry. President Cotton, then?
So I need the charter school tuition on the last slide. Explain to me, please.
Sure. I gotta get the, okay. Yep? Okay. I'll just go ahead, Ms. Cotton, I'm sorry.
Well, my question is, is that, my understanding is that there are going to, that new charter schools came into Buffalo, and I'm not necessarily seeing that reflected. I understand what happened with the other, the two charter schools, but I think there were a total, well, maybe one is not coming, but there was a total of two additional ones that came in. And so I'm not sure if that's reflected in there.
Yes, the charter school tuition line for this year, like every year, we base it on current year's enrollments, and then we actually gather, our charter department gathers data for each school on their proposed expansion plans by grade, by whatever, and any new schools. Those counts are added in to our calculation and then multiplied by the state tuition rate. This year, that calculation was done, but we also had to deal with the closure of, potential closure of Westminster and Enterprise. We then made an assumption on how many of those students, I think it might have been 1,300 overall, would attend a Buffalo School, and how many might attend a non-Buffalo School, non-pub or charter. So we did our best at estimating that data, knowing we're going to keep a real close eye on it, but it is a very thorough estimate of enrollments next year.
So you feel it's a comfortable number?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay, can you go, can you hand me one more question? I think it was on slide number five. Let's go back to slide five, I think it was. Okay, so this slide does not reflect any private schools at all. Why was that?
We, the first slide was, hold on, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm just wondering, why is there assumption that none of the children are going to private schools, and there hasn't been an increase in private enrollment?
Couple of things, oh, sure, they are not included there, and that is a very good point. We, the chart to the left was pulled from the state website, which did not have the non-public data. But to answer your feeling about whether or not those are increasing or not, on the data that we maintain here by being in contact with the non-pubs, we do not see any increase at all in the non-pubs. I've seen newspaper articles with this and that. Overall, there is not an increase from what we're seeing. But those are not in here.
The only reason I say that, Jim, and certainly I appreciate how thorough you've been, and I always appreciate you, and you know that, you've just been consistent over the years. But the reason I say that is, is that can, you're welcome, that that can be interpreted to mean that we've lost our children to charter schools when in essence, we may, there may be, you know, more than one factor involved. That's the only reason I pointed that out.
And it's a very good point. You're right on about that. A more thorough analysis, including the private schools column, should be included, and I can see about getting that done.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Larry Scott, I believe your hand is up?
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Very well presented. Is this the completion of your presentation, or are you doing more on this coming year's budget?
I'm here to answer any questions on the first part of the district Munis budget, and we have Maria Wood with us to answer questions on the school-based budget portion of it. But my presentation is done.
Okay, so, well, first off, simple question. Can this presentation be shared with us?
Yeah.
And then, number two, and you know, this is something that I harped on last year. In looking through the budget, I'm only seeing an increase in reading teachers of 1.18, total 18.51, from what, from what was presented to us in the email from Mr. Pritchard. And then for guidance, we're actually seeing a decrease of 2.72. And then psychologists and social workers seem to be remaining relatively consistent with last year's budget. I'm, when I look through the school-based budgets, and I raised this last year, my professional opinion is that we need to invest in more reading teachers, and if we, if we're trying to choose between one or the other, we, I feel like reading teachers that are directly providing service, teaching intervention to our students are much more valuable than coaches. And so when I look through the, some of the individual budgets, I'm seeing increases in coaches and decreases in reading teachers. And in my opinion, we, our elementary schools should be guaranteed at the bare minimum at least one reading teacher, at least one. If, in my, it should be about five. But for example, like West Hurdle, when I look at that school-based budget, they will not have one reading teacher next year. And that is not a population that shouldn't be having a school year without any type of reading support, any reading teacher on staff. And that's a change from this current year. And then, you know, we all know that this pandemic has impacted students socially and emotionally, and they're going to need that support returning to our buildings, and to see either no increase or a decrease in the, in guidance is concerning to me.
I, I'll, I'll respond from a budget accounting standpoint, which really isn't the heart of your question, but right now, the detailed book that you have, not the school-based budget portion, but the other portion, is right now being reconciled with the school-based budget. So what you see in those school-based budgets will be fully reflected in the Munis budget in a day or two. Secondly, on guidance, the decrease, this is also part of the budget process. As of right now, and we had a ton of trouble getting good detail from the departments, not not because of lack, not for lack of cooperation, but because of system problems. Um, they identified two vacancies that were at the department level rather than the schools, and they had removed them pending the school-based budget reconciliation, which we're undergoing right now. So regarding your other comments on reductions in counts, uh, it's really driven by the school-based budget, and I could turn it over to Maria Wood right now.
And my question might be even more directed to the superintendent as well.
Yeah.
Yes, and I'm listening, Larry, to your questions, of course. Wanted to try to get the whole picture before I did respond. Certainly don't disagree with your thinking. What I, what I am clear talking with Jeff and the school-based people that I work with every day, the ASLs who then work with the principals, is there an additional 30 positions that I did approve that school-based budgets were asking for that may not be reflected in this, in this budget yet? Uh, and I do think they were a range of, from counselors to instrumental music, to science teachers, to a whole, a whole host of positions there. So I did approve that, which then made all of the school-based budget requests, all the school-based budget requests whole. So in other words, they balanced their budget. Because I asked him, I said, what, are there anything to make a partial, a whole, a .8 counselor, a 1.0, go back and ask for all of that? And then try to see if that, with that, would they be, would they feel like they had enough based on the knowledge of their student population at this time to, to have a good lift year in the coming year? So, that's what I did. Thirty-nine, uh, sorry, 30 FTEs have been approved, but they may not be reflected. I think we should look at those first. And then we, I also approved all of the AP positions that aren't budgeted each year. There were 13 of those that should be reflected into the budget. So there's a 43 FTEs that begin to get at that issue. The other question I asked was, how many social, emotional, learning, mental health faculty do we have? And there's 281 staff that are assigned for social, emotional, psychological, mental health support for our students. 281 staff. So again, I want to shake those out across all of the schools, take a good look at them, and so forth. Now, this issue of reading, while I, while I concur, it is difficult to get credentialed reading teachers. And so sometimes school-based budgets have chosen and elected and so forth. But we'll take a look at it. I do think that when you get a high-quality reading teacher, that it, that it does make a big difference for our children. So, let's take a look at it, Larry. It's not been negated. Uh, it's just that we're still filling in the gaps. And at this point, though, all the school-based budgets are whole and balanced according to what they've asked for and what they felt they needed most going into this next school year. So I have in my notes a parking lot here, and we'll revisit this over the days ahead.
That's helpful, helpful, thank you. So it sounds like stay tuned, and we should see that reflected in the next proposal, proposed budget.
Yeah, yeah, conversations with staff, yes.
Okay.
All right.
That's all for me.
Okay, for, for each of the board members, you received, I know it was late, it was sent late, it was sent Monday night. So I don't know if you had an opportunity to go through the package that our CFO sent us. It, uh, it had our general fund revenues, it had our general fund expenditures by cost centers, by projects, by functions. It had the debt service in, uh, fund in there, food service, all of our grants, and then most importantly, for each of you, it had each of your schools, so that you could see if you were losing positions, if you were down positions, um, what, you know, exactly what grant money was given to your schools. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to take a look at that, your, your school-based budget. It was just two, you know, Tuesday and maybe today. So I don't know if you've had enough time to be able to even look at that and ask any questions, but, um...
Sharon Wood, before you go into your budget, can you answer the question that Lou Petrucci has, please, before we go into the next phase? I don't think you saw his hand.
Oh, Lou, go ahead, I didn't see your hand.
Thank you, Sharon. Uh, yes, the question I had is about the, the $289 million that we've had. So not from a programmatic standpoint, but from a budgetary standpoint, has there been any discussion as to how it's going to be allocated over the three years, you know, equal thirds, 60, 30, 10? Is there going to be an emphasis on, you know, spending that dollars this year or beginning of next year so that we can address some of the learning loss with some of our students and address some of the community concerns as how this is going to be spent? I'm just wondering if you've been part of, if there's been any discussions along those lines?
So Admir, if you could take down these slides, please, so we can see each other. Thank you. Thank you for that question, Lou, I appreciate it. We have begun those discussions in earnest, certainly, but we want to continue to get the data that I've asked a number of divisions and departments to provide for us so that we can add that into the conversation. We've had one community hearing so far. I have the summary of those notes here. Um, and then we've had some requests come in from, from other groups as well. So that's, we're just beginning to scaffold all of that. But what's most important is what is the data saying about our students? What is the academic data saying over this past, over the course of this year? What is the psychosocial, emotional data saying about our students? And that will go into a scaffolding from pre-NATO to career in each of the major stages of development through that continuum, where we need to strengthen, where we need to go deeper, wider, and bolster all of our students' needs, not just academics. So yes, that discussion has begun. We have several retreats planned, individual division retreats, as well as a whole cabinet retreat. Certainly, we want to hear from the board members and what their constituents are suggesting to them. And I'm putting all of this into a scaffold and a framework that I think you'll find very useful. And so that work has begun. But I don't have a decision that I've made on that yet because we haven't had that discussion with you yet. So bringing it all together, weaving it, knitting it, and making sure that it complies as well as, as what we call a transformation, BPS Transformation 2.0, Education Bargain 2.0. It's going to be, it's going to be really, really exciting and lift the district to even higher heights. This, this is an opportunity that's once in a lifetime, once in many, several generations, frankly. So we've got to get it right. Got to make sure that we attend to all the details of this important undertaking. So that would be, that would be the way that I would respond at this time. Within a month or so, you will, you will start to see what this looks like. And I think that at the June 16th meeting, I had wanted to bring that to you for your full discussion, input, and comment and observation, June 16.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cash, that was very helpful.
Thank you.
Any, I'm making sure no more hands, hands are up. Sharon, or President, your hand's up.
You're going through the budget? Are you going to go through the budget, or is that it?
Uh, Dr. Cash, I, I know you went through the four-year plan at a very high level, but do you, uh, do you think that our CFO, acting CFO, deputy CFO can go through at least pages five, uh, which is the revenues and, and go over with the board the significant million-dollar, multi-million-dollar paying items? I know I asked a lot of questions, and I don't know if everybody's had a chance to read those questions, but I, I do believe that, um, uh, we should be presented, the board should be presented, the revenues and the, the expenditures and with an explanation of the major, you know, large items. So can you, can you handle that, Mr. Burns?
So Jim and Maria, are you able to go through the budget at a, I don't know, whatever level of detail the board is indicating? I'm prepared to do it if you, if you are able to do it.
Dr. Cash, from my perspective, and Mrs. Woods, I can certainly go through the revenues. And then we did answer a list of questions that you had and submitted them. And, and I think that would be a great start unless you have other questions, sure.
So you, you're saying you'll go through the revenue and you want me to go over the questions that, uh, that was, that I sent, and the board members have been given the answers?
If that's okay with Dr. Cash, yes.
Sure, this is the board's pleasure, and it's one of the most important things the board does every year. So absolutely, take as much time as you need.
Okay. Uh, Mrs. Woods, should I start with the revenues on page five of the document?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Does everyone have that document? I, I don't know if you can put it up or not.
I can't.
They're emails, they can bring it up.
So if you want to gather that page, let me know, and then I'll go through it with you.
Board members, he's indicating that since we, we were emailed this item Monday night, you do have it in emails, and if you want to go to page five of the document our CFO sent us, the 2021-22 draft budget, page five has, uh, has our revenues.
Are you talking about that 127-page document that was emailed to each of us?
Yes, yes.
Yes, that's the document. I don't, like I said, I don't know if you've had a chance to go through it, but Mr. Burns is well able to walk us through that, that particular item.
Talking about page five, right?
Yes, page five.
So if we have questions, Paul, do you want us to raise our hands?
Yes, please. Uh, Mr. Burns, can you go over page five, if everyone has it?
I, I'm sorry, Mrs. Woods, pardon?
Can, can you go over page five, the revenues with the significant changes for the board?
Sure. Uh, okay, we'll, we'll start at the bottom. Uh, this shows a complete list of every revenue category and MUNIS accounting code for all of our general fund revenues. Uh, the third column over shows the 1920 actual revenues. They were 913 million. The next column over is the current year's approved budget. A few things to note in that one are very important. The second line, appropriated fund balance. We were planning on using $50 million out of our reserves to balance the budget this year. The use of reserves is a revenue item. And then if you scoot down to the basic formula aid, that, that includes our foundation aid plus all other categories of state aid, such as transportation aid and building aid. And then there's other formula-based aids. That's total 624 million. What that also included was a $29 million reduction from the state into those numbers. And you'll see, third line from the bottom, there's a federal emergency disaster assistance. The district received $29,583 from the federal government. The state reduced our state aid, uh, their state aid commitments by that same amount. So we, last year, we didn't get an extra $29 million from the federal government. The state took that amount from their commitment. So, in the current year, we had revenues of 954,700,000, which included the use of $50 million in reserves. The next column over is, is our proposed budget, our draft budget. I'm going to go through a couple of, and then the, the last column is the change from what was approved in the current year to what, the draft budget for next year. That's really where I'd probably focus the rest of my comments. The first line, the first and third lines are the total commitment that we get from the city of Buffalo. It's always $70 million. So while there was a $4 million increase in the real property taxes, there was an offsetting dollar-for-dollar decrease in the third line, school tax relief reimbursement. Doesn't, so it nets out to the same total commitment from the city. It was just a reallocation for where those monies come from for the city. So there was no change in the commitment from the city. In total, $70 million. The second item to note is the second line, appropriated fund balance or our use of reserves. As noted in the presentation, we are still planning on using $29 million to balance the budget. Dr. Cash decided, because that's a one-time event. It, it, it really addresses the lag between how you, your transportation expenditures and when you get the aid. That will correct itself. There was a shortfall in state aid because we're, we're, next year, we're receiving aid on only $29 million in transportation expenditures due to the closing of the schools. In the current year, we're going to spend $60 million. We will get that aid in '22, '23. So it's really just a one-time timing issue in the state aid. So we're using $29 million of reserves to plug that hole on a one-time basis. If you know, noticed in the presentation in the four-year plan, in all the out-years, we're structurally balanced, not requiring any use of reserves. Um, the next item you might want to look at is the reduction in refund of prior year's expenditures, 6 million. That's conservative budgeting. Uh, 1920 actual was a million dollars. And then we probably over-budgeted about, and we put in $9 million in the current year. This year, Jeff and I, in our discussions on our revenue maximization program and things like that, we thought we'd put in a, a number almost in the middle of 3 million. So that number could actually be much greater than 3 million. Um, now, the next item is basic formula aid. That's about 98% of what we've received from the state. It is up $76 million. Just great news. Why it, why it only translates into a $17 million increase in total is due to the decrease in the amount of revenues from the use of reserves of 20... is due to the decrease in the amount of revenues from the use of reserves of 21 million and the fact that the Federal Emer- the CARES Act for 29 million is going away. So you take 76 million increase, that's a true increase from the state. Less those two adjustments, you net down to almost the 17,800,000 increase that we're projecting.
So board members, when, when everybody is saying to you, "We fought and got you 76 million dollars extra in foundation aid," and you're saying, "Where is it and" and why, where, why, uh, why aren't you spending it on some great increases and everything that they want? What, what we're being told and what you're looking here and you're seeing is 29 million of that is disappearing because we have a mismatch in our transportation aid. We're also losing 29.5 million, well, 21 million we're losing because of the mismatch in transportation aid. 29.5 million we're losing because the federal, the emergency disaster aid is not gonna be there. And then, and then there's another item on here that evidently the projections for our lottery aid is going down 4 million. I thought people were gambling more, but evidently they're not. It's going down.
I, I'd like, Mr. Woods, if I could address that? That truly should not be viewed as a cut. The lottery aid is the, is a determination by the state how they're going to fund our foundation and other state aid. Some years, they use more lottery aid and less of general fund, uh, and vice versa. So it has a, a net impact of zero. That's just, uh, for accounting purposes, we have to have that line in there. But it's all part of the state aid package. It is not a cut, there's no reduction. It's just how the state plans on funding our state aid.
Okay, uh, well, I'm just, I'm just looking at the presentation and it does show a $4 million reduction, but you're saying that's, that's, it's, it is what it is. It's $4 million, how the state allocated it.
Yeah, I, I'll drill down a tiny bit more. In the proposed budget column, you see 701 million dollars in, in basic formula aid. We reduce that by the amount that the state is gonna fund from the lottery aid. So that 701 million includes a negative 92,700,000. And then we put on a separate line, that exact same amount, 92,700,000. That just, uh, it's required and it shows the readers of these documents, the funding source for their state aid. 701 million from their general fund and 92 million from their lottery aid.
Thank you for explaining that. Can you give a little bit more detail on the prior year expenses line? The $6 million cut, you're saying that, uh, you put 9 million in in this budget we're currently in and you're gonna drop it by 6 million down to only 3, 3 million? Can you put a little bit more detail on what's included in the refund of prior year expenses line? Six, a $6 million reduction is significant.
Yep, uh, the refund of prior years can include, uh, numerous items. When we revise submissions and it takes between, if you revise them within a certain period of time, you get the money quickly. If you revise them, say, two years later, you might be waiting five years to get that money. And secondly, just based on historical run rates, we were more comfortable using three rather than nine. I think the number will come in at about 6 million this year. So to be conservative and those num, those refunds of prior years are not guaranteed, like the state aid numbers, we put in a more conservative number.
So you're saying, uh, generally when people prepare budgets, they take a look at your actual for this year and you're saying the actual for this year is 6 million, but based upon some intervening variables, you're going to cut it in half to 3 million?
Yes.
And what will happen if it comes in actually at 6 million as it did this year?
We would use less of our reserves if everything else stayed the same. And our total revenues have been coming in very close to our budgets.
Well, you just said this item was budgeted at 9 and only came in at 6, so.
The total budgets, the budget overall comes in very close to, uh, the actuals come in very close to the budget.
Okay, thank you. Terrence Hurd, I believe you have your hand up?
Yes, uh, thank you, Ms. Woods. And I also thank Mr. Barnes for a great presentation. I've had a couple of questions. We experienced a, um, a computer attack this year, not to go into a deep detail of it. Is that structural, is that money's gonna come out of our budget for this year or next year? The 2020 or 2021? And I'm just, I'm just looking at the, the line item of the, of, um, the monies that's gonna be received for new computer softwares for the following year. I'm concerned that we do need to upgrade. Is that a, uh, accurate amount that we're looking to spend for it? Far as the funding that we're receiving?
First, I have to give the author of this presentation full credit. Jeff Pritchard put that presentation together. Uh, secondly, uh, funding for our technology needs, uh, will come from numerous sources. What, the, the main part of recovering or updating from the, uh, cra, uh, cyber attack is not in the general fund. We probably have an extra $700,000 in here for some network upgrade. The remainder of it will come from other funding sources, maybe including the federal stimulus. I don't know.
So we're on, we're on certain riddles. Oh, go ahead, Dr. Cash.
Yeah, I'm sorry, thank you, uh, Jim. Mr. Hurd, um, that's a good question, um, but it will be multiple sources. Some of it we are doing right now under the auspices of emergency, uh, funding for beginning to build back and bring back our systems. So there is money right now, um, a couple hundred thousand dollars that we are putting toward, uh, taking care of, uh, bridge emergency work that has to happen so we can continue to function, so we can continue to bring our students back and have the remote learning as well as the in-person learning. It's all very delicate right now, but knock on wood, it's holding up. So that's one part of the answer. The other part is that we've been very aggressive with trying to get prior year's E-rate reimbursement. There was a period of time when we did not get E-rate reimbursement and some of, uh, Myra Burden's staff went after that. Sort of like what Mr. Barnes did with, um, Mr. Barnes, you'd have to remind me, but you, you guys went out and got funding from prior years and, and it helped. So we just got a check for $547,000 from 2016 colleagues. Uh, so to the credit of the Josh, I believe it was, that went and did that research and was aggressive about it, uh, got half a million dollars in. And that's not even talking about the year to come as well as '17, '18, '19 and so forth. So that money will be used toward, again, rebuilding our infrastructure, beginning to put us on what I have recommended. Staff is looking into it, but rather than buy computers, IT advances in computer devices, um, come so quickly that by the time you buy and pay for computers, they're already anachronistic. So we're gonna, I recommend it, putting us on a lease program and beginning to can weave those computers, get rid of these six, seven-year-old computers that quite frankly aren't worth, uh, much anymore. And so the staff is looking into that. But we see, we see robust investment into our IT infrastructure and into our IT software and hardware, uh, investment that will come from, as I said, a little bit of O and M right now to get us through the year. But then as the new year comes, uh, because that's a legitimate, encouraged way to spend ARPA and ESAR funds, uh, we'll be taking money from there and using it as part of our, as part of our work, sort of going to what Lou had indicated earlier. But again, we have to put it all on the big board, so you'll see where all these strategic investments will occur. But IT will certainly be a, a significant area of investment. And then we're gonna use E-rate dollars and smart bonds, smart school bond, uh, money that we also get at substantial levels. So between those four major buckets, I think we'll be in good stead if we can just get through this little emergency period that we're in. And it's, it's, it's wobbly, guys, it's wobbly, but we're gonna get there. Each day, we're making good progress. So I think, I hope that answered your question, uh, Mr. Hurd.
Yes, Dr. Cash. Uh, you see, my major concern is that, um, we learned through this COVID that technology is, is growing and we know that we're gonna need new technologies in the future. Now I just wanted, wanted to make sure that this district and its staff and you, everybody worked together that, that we prepare for what's gonna happen in the future. We have no idea what's gonna happen in COVID in the next one, two or three years. And also, um, have a lot of complaints from, from parents and, and children saying that the tablets were too small, that it was hard for them to learn on and, and my son also, you know, um, we actually had to get, you know, another larger screen computer for him just so that he can do his work because he was unable to see and, and it was very distracting, you know, um, from the, some of the technologies that some of the kids receive, you know, um, from the district. A lot of kids, um, function very well on it, but, but they just need like larger screens and things like that that we can prepare for. I know we can't fridiciously, you know, going to everybody home and give everybody computers or, um, on, on that manifest, but, um, just to prepare what the future's gonna hold. I know we also talked about maybe possibly having a program where, where virtual learning would be, you know, one school or something like that. So I just want this budget to reflect what's gonna happen in the future so we can be further advanced, you know, than other districts as we move forward.
Yes, and I think that's a remarkable, uh, Mr. Hurd, thank you, very noted.
Thank you. Last thing, I was gonna keep it quick. Um, I, also I have, um, a lot of parents that, that called me, um, you know, that was, um, newcomers. And I know that last year we had a, a newcomers academy, you know, which was expanded, you know, to different schools. But, um, they, they really enjoyed that family. I'd like to know if we have any plans on trying to bring a program like that back where, where they can, um, have those type of programs together and work with one another. I don't know if it's too soon to be talking about it because we're just, you know, looking at the budget right now. But that's, that's one thing and I've seen from parents and, and children, you know, to, um, some of our, um, our panel discussions that we have, you know, that really helped them in the past. And how can we project that type of, uh, education in the future?
I think I understand. If anybody could help me understand that question, uh, Jen, do you, do you, could you help me? Darren, could you help me because of the school related to the newcomer academy? I mean, I'm.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not really sure. I was trying to follow that. I was not really sure which program Mr. Hurd was referring to.
Oh, can I chime in here? Um, I believe, um, Mr. Hurd, correct me if I'm wrong, but that type of, the, the type of program and what that school offered, um, I believe there's pieces of that that's happening within the schools that are already in the district. So if you're looking at like I-Prep and Lafayette, we do have the supports in place that were in, um, the, uh, the newcomer academy. That program in itself, yes, it was unique, but it also, i- it's really folded kind of into the current Lafayette structure. And with Principal Starkey knowing very, you know, knowing full well of what that program entailed, he's working to make sure that that is, you know, not just the program in itself, the uniqueness of the program, but just the initial resources and everything that it offered is really been boosted in, in other schools in the district that have that type of, you know, that have those populations. So you're correct in the fact that it, it was a wonderful program, but, you know, if we can go into it another time or I can work with you on, um, what exactly happened and how, you know, there was a, a decline in, in the folks that were actually attending the program. But we can also work with the district to see what schools and what programs are kind of equivalent that are helping with, you know, the learning that was happening in the newcomer academy. So it hasn't dissipated 100% at all. It's in place, it's just, you know, it's in different formats, but it's within the, it's within, especially in the West District considering that population. But I know that it's been, um, also looked into into the other schools that have major, uh, populations. And, and that's just my take on it. I don't know if that helps at all.
That was very helpful, Jen, and I think, Mr. Hurd. Now I understand the question better. So, Mr. Hurd, uh, the newcomer academy was really innovative. It has been here for a while. And I think what you're asking is with the resurgence of new Americans and newcomers coming into our school district, because they had taill- tailored off or tailed off for about a three or four-year period, now they're coming, uh, and rising in number again, we're seeing that. You want to make sure that those same services that were, were done so well in the newcomer academy don't go away and that the kids come now have that same level of support going forward. If that's the question, then, uh, I can absolutely assure you that that commitment remains strong. We have good people working there. And if we need to grow it, grow that program, we will. But Jennifer's right, as, as students come in, they need that early, uh, beginning introduction and induction. But as they become more toward commanding and expanding in their language acquisition, then they can begin to, uh, tributary and feed out into all of the other high schools, uh, in Buffalo Public. So I think it's a great program and we're, we're gonna continue that and give it all the support it needs.
Um, I, I know that we have to wait to see the numbers of this year and know that COVID has a huge effect on, on the learning ability of, uh, the way education was, um, had to be performed this past year. Uh, but, uh, when it was disbanded, uh, it had a lot of complaints and a lot of calls, you know. It's just, this basically saying that, you know, they, they love being together. It was, it was like a family to them, um, whenever they're in one building. And I know that Lafayette has, um, picked up with, with Principal Stark over there that picked up a lot of the program and, you know, working with those children over there. But some other children went to other different schools and, um, you know, that was their question, you know, because they had that family-type orientation in one, in one facility. So that, that was my question, but we can discuss that more later as, as we go with the budget items.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see any other, any other, any other hands up. So can we move to page seven of the budget, which is general fund expenditures by cost center? And each of you, um, you received this sheet and what it shows and the questions that I sent to, uh, Mr. Barnes and our CFO. It shows, uh, positions by cost center, which means like the Board of Education has 11 people. And it shows the increases, positions, additional positions that have been put in the budget and positions that have been eliminated. So for those of you who saw my questions, uh, since Mr., you know, if you're looking at that, uh, sheet, there is a chief of strategic alignment added for 1.25 FTEs costing additional $110,000. But my question to Mr. Barnes was, what was that addition? And your answer was, um, Mr. Barnes?
Well, I don't know if Mr. Barnes can answer that as, as, as well as I can answer.
Oh, cool.
I believe that, that, that there's a number of things that are gonna have to happen now. We've gotta, I've gotta re, take a good look at the cabinet, uh, reorganize the cabinet, realign cabinet to the, to the work that's coming to make sure that we have capacity. Right now, we frankly don't have the full capacity that we, uh, have enjoyed over the last three or four years. Five, five. Five, five major players in this organization have moved on to the apex role of the superintendency across New York State, five. And all of them were excellent. So the role that, for example, David Mauricio had and Annabell Solar had, I never feel, we did not feel that to see how we, if we could get away with that and to see how the budget was. Because at that time, the budget was looking like we were going to be in a structural deficit and about $97 million in the hole just back in October, November, if you recall. With this change of fortune and with us, you know, losing an irreplaceable, another irreplaceable, like Dr. Darren Brown, I feel like we at least need to look at that strategic position, that strategic alignment position, which was over, for example, all of the community schools, because I want to do some more work with community schools and go deeper with those and try to broaden the, the portfolio of our community schools. Athletics looks like it's going to need some, some, some additional support with all of the requests and recommendations that, that you have and that, and that we want to provide for our students going forward. Charter schools is going to be a continued issue that we need to have a really competent person overseeing on a regular basis and providing information to the board, to me, because this challenge is coming. And then, of course, we want to integrate the precious students from these two charter schools that we just closed. So there's a lot, there's a big portfolio of work. I just named three of the things that that role will be doing as well as helping us engage with the community in a more robust way like we used to. During COVID, a lot of things were on pause. But I want to re-up that effort to make sure we have a continuous and really strong engagement with our community. Dr. Crestis does a great job, but we, we can always add support in making sure we're touching all the bases and no major stakeholder or constituency is left out of the conversation, if you will. So that's the role that is, is really being reactivated, if you will. It was paused and, and I'd like to reactivate that as part of my reorganization of the cabinet.
Excellent information, Dr. Cash. I'm just going to try, I don't want to make this too lengthy. So I'm just trying to go down the changes so that our, but our board members are, there was like a, a cut, a position, a position cut from the finance office. And my question was simply, we're bringing more money. How can we move the finance position? And you, you answered, you answered that one also, Mr. Barnes.
Yeah, the, the, the one FTE reduction in QA is offset by a one FTE increase in 4C charter schools. And that really touches on what Dr. Cash said. We're just moving an FTE to an area that we're going to focus more time and effort on to wring out some additional savings through audits, analysis and reporting. So it just got moved to the charter schools area.
Okay, also, there was a cut of a position in the grants department. And we just added all these $293 million in grants. So my question was simply, how could we do that?
Right, it's, this year's budget, because of the CARES money in the current year and some other, the continued transition to transparency accounting has some unique aspects to it. This cut in grants, in the current year, the CARES funding added a PETA person. That CARES funding is going away. So that one FTE will go away from the general fund, but will be picked up in some of the new federal stimulus money to continue the work that's required for all this money in grants. So it's just being moved to grants, I guess.
And I believe that's going to be a significant, significant in this budget when the board members go through it because there are a significant amount of reallocating and moving of positions. On page seven, the board members, I want to draw your attention to the addition of 64.58 teachers and 8.27 additional regular supervision. And if you were looking at that, I did ask the question what that was for. And Mr. Barnes, you can explain that to the board.
Sure. Part of our contingency planning for the additional students from maybe the new Westminster School, we put in fifty, over 50 teachers into that regular instruction line and additional administrators and PETA and clerical. Now, none of that, I don't have any information on the specific end result of that new school, but that makes up the majority of those increases. They're contingencies waiting on the actual fallout from this Westminster and Enterprise closing.
Well, I'm sure the board's well aware that the commitment was made that Westminster would become one of our public schools to consider continually excellent. So they'll be glad to know that that's what the additional staff is. Yep, the, the other item, another item on, on this page seven that the board members will note is that there's a reduction of 3.7 FTE in science. And I, I was a little concerned about that, but you, you had an answer for that.
Yes, this, this document is the Munis budget. It is not fully reconciled to the school-based budgets. And I know from my discussions with Jeff that the superintendent has included all requests from every school into the school-based budget. Because of the cyber attack, Munis being down, we are currently reconciling the school-based budget to Munis. These numbers will be revised after that reconciliation.
Well, I'm sure the board members will be, will be happy to hear that because when each of you get a chance to go over page seven and page eight, you'll note that there's a 6.5 cut in bilingual services staff.
Same answer.
And that concerned, that concerned me also.
Mrs. Woods, the answer is the exact same answer.
So these are not actual reductions, even though it appears at this point in time, the document is just a draft. So that's the same answer for, there is not really a cut on special education?
Special education might be, it's pending school-based budget reconciliation. But the issue there is they always over-budget aides and assistants. We put them in and during the year, they either don't hire them or say they don't need them. That, that spend's a little bit different. It's always a little bit different. Can I point out, can I point out one thing, Ms. Woods? On the bottom, on the bottom of page eight, the total change in FTE is an increase of 60.8 FTEs. Okay, so while the allocations might be off 0.5, a reduction of 0.3 and so on, overall, we have more than enough built into this draft budget to capture the school-based budget reconciliation and all the additions the superintendent has approved. We have more than enough room. We just need time to get it allocated.
I, I understand that, as you just said, a lot of this has to be a reconciliation with the school-based budget. But the increase of 60 positions of net overall, when you vindicated that 64 of those positions are for the, for Westminster schools, eight supervision positions are for the Westminster and, and the enterprise schools, four more are there. There is a net reduction. There actually are reductions in, in this, in this plan. Would you agree or disagree?
No, I would disagree respectfully. Maybe I wasn't clear. Of the 50 teachers in that 64 are dedicated to Westminster placeholder. Two administrators, a principal and an AP, and two PETA. 54 teachers just for Westminster. Now, also, what I, so that leaves six extra. But who's to say how many of those 56 Westminster positions are going to be picked up by Westminster? There is plenty of room. I, I am very confident, plenty of room to capture any and all changes in the reconciliation.
Okay, board members, that is the summary of pages seven and eight, showing you your general fund expenditures by cost centers. Any concerns about some of the cuts indicated on here, such as instructing computers? We are being assured that that's going to be reconciled or changed when the school-based budgets are added.
Yes.
Do you know when we might be receiving an update? So did these, these issues or indications that there is reductions won't, 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 won't be in this presentation?
We're shooting for the end of next week. Have it all completed in a new book issue, which will be a fully reconciled allocated budget proposal.
Okay, when are you shooting for the board to, to approve this budget?
Well, that's up to the superintendent.
Superintendent.
Well, I believe there's some calendar that Jeff had put forward. So you can take the time that you need. There might be some legal timeframes for the state, for the city. But I think the end of the month is certainly something that, that in prior years, somewhere around May 24th to the end of the month was when we've done it prior. But we'll check with Jeff and it depends on how much time you need. Like to see where you are at the board meeting, to see where you are, because that would certainly be a good time to do it from an efficiency standpoint. But if you need more time, then by all means, take the time. But usually, when I'm looking back over the, the calendar and the timeline is somewhere between May 24th. Because first of June, we have to start presenting our budget to the city and, and other entities. But Darren, do you have a recollection on that? I think that's, that's what I recall. Is that your sense as well? And maybe Lou, even Lou probably.
You may know when we have to present to the common council?
Right.
I do not off the top of my head, gentlemen, I'm sorry.
No worries.
Dr. Cash, this is Will. We do have a proposed date from the common council that's coming up very quick, but that's, that's flexible. And I'll be discussing that with you later this week.
And colleagues, I just want to let you know that by the common council time, I don't believe that at that meeting, Will, they're going to be proposing to take over this whole budget and let the city run the budget because they'll run it much more efficiently than we do. Is some of the, what I'm hearing out in the community. Just want to make sure. And then also to add five more board members to the board so that this money is spent properly and efficiently. So just want to make sure you weigh in on whether that should happen because I don't keep up with all of that. I don't know what they're doing. But Will, if you find out, please let, please let me know.
I, I can tell you that there's been no council member that has approached me or anyone in the district about supporting those ideas.
Okay.
Okay, I don't want to belong the budget. Just a couple of things I wanted to point out. Like on page 16, the budget goes through, and our CFO was giving us general fund expenditures by object of expense. And under the object of expense 440, which is contract services, there is a increase of $5,265,005. Can you, the question that I had raised was, is that for community services? It's $5 million. Can you give us a little more information on it?
I'm really glad you picked that one out. We're talking about allocations and reconciliations and having enough money in this draft budget to cover any contingency? That $5 million, $4.5 million of it are placeholder numbers that we will allocate from if we need the money while we're doing our reconciliations.
So it's just $5 million in there that at, at this point, we don't know what it's for. But at, at the, at the time we pass the budget or approve the budget, you will have more information? Or are you expecting us to leave that it's just a $5 million?
No, it'll be, you will vote, review and vote on a fully allocated and reconciled budget. Like, say, $2 million will come out of those lines. Now that we finally, now that we just received the school-based budget allocations for CSP, meetings, overtime and ancil, all that stuff, a lot of it may come out of this line and filter into those other lines.
Okay, likewise, under that same object of expenditure code, board members, there is a $3.4 million increase in plant services. And it's, it, we know that we know we need COVID equipment and whatever, but there was no detail to that. So my question was, what is that? And, you know, I just don't want to have the impression that we have just placeholders, contingency accounts, using up what was $17 million as an extra, extra aid that we received. Because the whole direction of this is to make sure our children get more services, that we remake education, improve it. And that's, that's what Dr. Cash is aiming for and that's what the board's aiming for.
All right, all right. What's, what's in that line is a $3 million eMERGE set aside to be used for COVID-related expenditures for next year. So we don't, so we don't know how or where they'll be spent exactly, but we have that money in there to cover those expenditures. We know they're coming. And in future years, they may have to be allocated out to all regular, like building supplies. It might change, it might increase our operating costs, but the money is in there. I, I would like to touch on, there are placeholders in this budget in no way, shape or form because those monies won't be directed at the children in Dr. Cash's initiative. It's simply a timing issue. We did not have time to allocate all those to, our total budget's 10,155 lines now. We needed to get the school-based budgets and how those schools wanted to spend their resources. We didn't have time to get those monies into the Munis budget. We're working on it right now. We started yesterday. So all those, they're not placeholders just to put fudge numbers in strictly for timing purposes. And that's all.
I think that's right, Jim. Ms. Woods, also, sometimes it is wise, and we've found this over the years, to have some specific set asides for, for example, contingency, emergency contingencies that might come out of plant and facilities. You've got 60 facilities that you've invested in, but there are things that, that break. There are things that come up. Water mains break, pipes break, air conditioning systems, HVAC systems go down, holes in roofs can biden and create a problem. So it's good to have an emergency contingency set aside. I asked Jeff to set aside $3 million for that. I'm not sure what line that's in, but there's $3 million for that because we've had those kind of issues before. And then I do believe we have a fairly sizable contingency or holdback. We call it the superintendent's equity holdback that we do have in there, larger than last year. So that when board members have specific concerns that we can look at and make sure that they. and make sure that they fit the transparency issues that we have to look at, that we can, we can address some of those as the year goes, as the year goes. Because right now, you don't know what the, the population is going to be come fall. You don't know what the needs are going to be come fall. And that's what we're looking at now. We're assessing all of that, looking at data cross-analytically, all across the system. And that then may have whole new recommendations about, hey, we need three of these, two of these, four of those, as, as, as the needs dictate. So there, that's what those kinds of holdbacks, if you will, are that I know of, that I know of. Beyond that, I think it's fair to say that at this point, because of the turnabout picture for the budget, we have not cut anything. Not to my knowledge, we have not cut anything. And we have held the school-based recommendations of things that weren't even in the first round, when they said, you know, through the ASLs, Associate Superintendents for School Leadership, ask Dr. Cash if he can give us a point two, so that I'll, I'll be able to retain a one-point-oh counselor. Ask if I can get a point four, so I can have a full science teacher instead of a part science teacher. All of those kinds of requests have come in, and they have been approved. So I think you're right. Let's, let's get this budget book reconciled. We apologize for the timing, but it wasn't anybody's fault. It was just that, uh, this, this Munis situation has had us where we have to create this kind of a new from scratch versus following the template from prior years. So we, we're working feverishly on that. I know Jeff worked all weekend and his team on it, so we'll, we'll continue to get that to you.
Yeah, okay, I see our, our board president has her hand up, but I just want to ask one other question, because you're stating, you're saying that there aren't going to be cuts. So I want to bring your attention that under the general fund expenditure, there is almost a million dollar cut. And that was one of the questions, educational instructional supplies. There was a six hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar cut in instructional supplies.
What item number, Chairman Woods?
It's, and it's under functional, it's, uh, it's function five hundred, and it's on page.
I can answer that.
It's on page sixteen.
Yeah.
Okay, so I just wanted to walk you guys through these budget details, because it is a little bit tedious, but I'm at the, basically at the end of the questions I submitted. But that is page, that is page, page sixteen, function five hundred. It is six hundred thousand cut in instructional supplies, two hundred thousand cut in teacher supplies. I only raise these questions and send these questions, because I believe these are things that we are concerned about, and we just wanted to have an understanding.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Woods, those are two perfect examples of us waiting for the school-based budget. We just received the data on all the teacher supplies, which are based on beds projections in there. So now we can allocate the money appropriately to each and every school. And in addition, because of the Munis breakdown, by this time, we would have received, uh, on top of the school allocations for instructional supplies, department allocations from Kelly Bowden. She's terrific. She has not been able to get anything into Munis. We are importing her data into Munis for her. So there will not be a cut in instructional supplies or the teacher supply front. They'll all be reconciled over the next few days.
Board President Cotton, you have your hand up? We can't hear you.
My hand has been up. Can you go back to page five, James, and explain to me what, what's going on with this interest item? This is under revenue, twenty-four oh one and line twenty-four oh two. I'm curious to know, um, I, I can't remember why there would be such a big reduction in those two items.
Uh, that one, I, I don't have a detailed answer for you. If you'd have a little patience, I will get it to you first thing in the morning.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I'd just like to also take the time to say that, and to sign out, what is going on with the conversation with the city about our interest earnings? Does anyone know on the money that they're holding for us? Has anyone had any conversation about that lately, in any of the ad hoc?
Uh, no, Sharon, I can say that Barbara Miller Williams and I were exchanging messages today. I was testifying, um, behalf of my department, on behalf of the city budget. Barbara testified afterwards. She had reached out to me to have a conversation, to give me the particular topic, but that was one of the things that I was going to bring up to her when we do speak.
Okay, because I think that that's a major issue that this board needs to address this year, particularly since it was cited in our, one of our audits. Jim, does it show anywhere the refunding of the bond, the savings associated with that?
The, the, there's a, there's a debt schedule within this document, starting on page forty-nine.
Okay.
Now, that, that reflects our normal changes in a debt schedule. And as we're paying down debt, uh, those total commitments get lower. I will have to check it. I do not think this one fully reflects any refunding at this time. But it is on our radar.
Well, I didn't see it, so that's why I was asking. And so I, I wanted to know about that. The other thing I wanted to say in regards to this, and, um, is that I was, um, a bit taken back when I saw, um, the, that this budget was sent to us with reductions for certain schools and increases for other schools. And I don't understand how every year we get to this point, where if you take a look at one school, they got two extra people, but if you look at another school. So Dr. Cash said that there's going to be a new budget given to us, and it's going to have all these increases in it. I would prefer that budget immediately, because at this point, we passed a resolution about equity. And I was clear last year to say that the equity is supposed to be put in the budget upfront. So I don't even know how the conversations even happen in the schools, where the schools need it the most, that they end up with less people in the conversation. It's almost as like, this is deja vu, I feel like Caddyshack. Every year, we go through this over and over and over again, over and over and over again. How is it that the most needed schools end up with the less amount, less amount of people, et cetera? So I'm very curious to see what's going on, particularly since, okay, we realize that our children have lost a lot of footing over the past year. Okay, it was just brought to my attention today that this is the sixth marketing period that children have had that they have not been in, in, in schools. And so to present a budget before the board, even though all this other resources and things that are coming forward are there, and I'm telling you, this foundation aid, I think we're going to have a major concern with that, because the people who fought for that foundation aid are looking for that money to be utilized in certain ways. So in addition to what we have with the Esser funds, we have the foundation aid people who are, uh, who have their concerns, and they want their needs addressed as well. So I'm just concerned about when are we going to get the budget, the school-based budget, that I can really look at and see if, if, if equity is really happening in this district or not at this point? Because we know that the money that we're receiving is just temporary. It's not going to be here in three years. So if the mindset of the administrators or the people who are bringing the message down to the schools is not changing, I'm concerned, because we know that the data should have been used, if ever. This is the time to use our data in our schools to reflect what's going on in our buildings. How many children are not there? How do we not have attendance teachers in every, in every school at this point? How do we have, you know, I'm just looking at this. So I really need to see the, the actual school-based numbers in hold before I could even, even contemplate, even, you know, agreeing to even approve a budget at this point. And I'm just feeling that this year is a little crazy. But what was interesting is, in previous years, we would have in-depth discussions on different parts of the budget, and we weren't able to do that this year. So to, you know, the rest of the school or whatever, I'm just concerned that the message is not there for equity, because we know we're going to need additional support for our kids. And I'm just not seeing it in the, in the initial outlay. I see certain schools got extra people, I see certain schools had people taken away. That conversation, to me, is, is, is crazy that it even happened. That's just my two cents on that. Frustrating, it really is.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what you're alluding to, Ms. Cotton, because if, are the school-based budgets complete, Jim, or are they still being?
They're, they're complete, Dr. Cash.
Okay. So I'm not sure what you're talking about. The schools have gotten everything they've asked for, everything they've asked for, that's in the, that's in the school, everything.
So where's the equity piece, Dr. Cash?
Well, tell me where the problem.
We passed a resolution about equity.
This is what they've asked for. So what's the problem?
We passed a resolution about equity, Dr. Cash. Where's the data that, that's being used to determine the needs of the schools? People, you know, these people are so conditioned that they dare not ask for any, they're afraid to ask for anything extra. But when, but my concern here is, we know going into this, that we have major concerns that our children have to address. We have some schools that children are coming to school. We have other schools that children are not coming to school. I don't see the support, the equity overlays, and I don't see the data, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I'd like to see the data for each school that's got a reduction in staff, and I'd like to see the data for each school that got an increase in staff. That's, that's what I'd like to see, that's all.
That's fine, that's fine.
And you said at the beginning of your comment.
I don't think there was any, I don't, I don't, it, you, you may get a reduction if your population continues to drop precipitously, Sharon.
Especially if you haven't had an attendance teacher. That's the point.
Amount of staff, because schools vary widely in the number of students that they have. So part of that is going to be a function of that. But you have a school-based management team that meets on a regular basis to determine what their needs are for their student population. I've had principals all year long looking at their needs, looking at these student needs as these students start to come back into the school building. And we have our last phase this Monday coming. And they'll get another good gauge of where students are, what they need at that time.
So when can the board be shared some of this information? Because you're asking us to make a, a decision based on a conversation that's being had, but throughout this whole time, we've been asking for data. Kathy, uh, Dr. Evan Brown, under her commit, her committee, has been put off on several occasions without getting the data or whatever. So when, when can we see a, 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 a reflection on this? Because as I look at this, even with the Westminster, I didn't see under Westminster, Westminster has a, a community school program. I didn't see even under Westminster that the community school piece had been put in there. Okay, as I'm, as I'm going through some of these, it was like, okay, maybe we still have some more stuff that's going to be sent to us, and maybe, um, I'm, 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 I'm not receiving some of this. But if you're basing anything on, 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 on to these figures in an abnormal year, I don't understand why, why people are being reduced during this time. I just don't understand it. So I, I need to see some data in order to justify it for me. And I'm going to continue to fight faculty and children.
Send the questions. Ms. Woods sent over, I don't know, thirty, thirty, forty questions. We answered each one of those questions. Feel free to send your questions, please, so that we can look at it, and we'll give it a thorough response. And then if you still have gaps or concerns or any of those issues, we'll continue to talk about it. We'll have as many meetings as we need to, to talk about it.
Okay, thank you.
Get it straight.
But I do agree with Larry, but I agree in addition to that, that we need attendance teachers. We need, and I've said this before, we need a benchmark, that there should be a basic standard in this district for certain levels of achievement as well as for attendance. We need in addition to support for our schoolchildren learning how to read, we need math support. Okay, because our children, if they cannot read and do math, they're not going to survive. And we need attendance teachers, okay? And they need to figure out a way, how do we, in this environment, knowing that the conversations that are being had nationally, as well as within this city, is that children are not coming to school? How do we not increase those areas? That's the equity overlays I'm talking about. Okay, just a support.
We've been in a, we've been in a year with remote learning and then gradual phasing, uh, in-person learning. So we can, the only thing you said that, you know, I would, I would prefer to have a, a more in-depth conversation with is about these attendance teachers. The, the other thing you're talking about, we've, we've provided those supports. And, and we provided a lot of support.
You haven't divided them, Dr. Cash, and I hear me, you're not, you didn't provide them based on the data of the schools. In other words, you might have a school that might need two literacy teachers, where one school may only need one based on the, the, the data that's coming out. That's the answer, the data feature I'm looking for.
We asked, okay? So it hasn't been a, a discussion that hasn't included the school-based management team in the conversation. All we can do is ask, what is it that you need, given your thorough examination of the data at this time heading into next year? So we can balance our budgets, put in a good initial budget for the board's consideration, for everybody's consideration. And then as the school year gets underway, if we need to make adjustments, that's what some of these old backs are for. So I believe that we're not disagreeing here. I don't, I don't know what you're looking at that would give you alarm, but I'm not alarmed at this point about the school-based budget, if they've been populated in the way that, that we've been talking about yet. Now, if there's still some reconciliation to be done, then I would understand how you might see some things that look off kilter, but not as far as reconciled.
Okay, but we've been using, all year long, we've been using the COVID factor. I don't know what the, what, what it is, but we've been using the COVID factor. And then when I see the budget does not have the COVID factor entwined in it for each school, particularly the ones, from what I'm reading, that the twenty-five, of a quarter of a percent schools that are high poverty, that's a major concern, because the federal government has identified there's a need for those buildings.
We really have talked about high poverty schools, we really have.
What?
We put a lot of resources more, see, that's why I need a specific question, so I can line it up to the school, to the school, and then let, let us talk about it and help you with a good response. We, we.
Okay, but, but, but I'm saying the entire district should be receiving a COVID in, uh, 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 in, in, uh, what is it, injection?
And that's what we do, and that's what we're working on. It's not in this budget, because this is, this is O and M. And I plan to use a good amount of our Esser and ARPA funds to give it that turbo boost that you're talking about, that we will, we will get, we will get this addressed. But right now.
Uh-huh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Looking at, I'm still looking at data, I'm still looking at needs, because this year, we just finished the third marketing period, okay? And so we've got, we've got some more time to look at this and, and get it right. I'm, I'm, I'm not concerned that the schools won't have what they need come the start of the new school year. We've got a robust summer program being planned, and it's going to be starting right after school is out. And then we'll be ready for the new school year. So if you have a question, let us know, let us know.
Well, my concern is, and I'm letting you know right now, my concern is that the equity piece is not being taken into consideration into the equation.
But that's an assertion.
Only we had, we had an equity issue before COVID. Okay, and I'll give you an example of one. We don't have schools that have ever had an opportunity to have a musical instrument program. That's an equity concern for me, okay? So, um, when we talk about have, making sure that the schools have what they need, if we're not using the data, if we're not understanding. if we're not using the data, if we're not understanding that there was an equity deficient deficiency in this district prior to COVID, then those are my concerns and I'll I'll.
And I understand. We've heard that. And some of the schools have said they want this and they want to keep the instrumental, they want to do. But when you talk about a full equity of curriculum, many of our schools are different. So we have to really talk about that and and what that means, uh, at that level. Uh, you know, I I I'm, I get it on on one level. But on another level, um, I'm I'm not sure every school, uh, wants or needs a a big band. You know, a marching band, for example, you know? Or that they can have the capacity to say sustain a program.
Nobody asks for a big band, Dr. Cash. All we ask, all I'm asking for is for the schools that have no musical instrument to be able to play an instrument. That's what I'm saying. I'm asking for the big band.
Why would a school should ask for that?
Well, wait a minute. Wait, wait a minute. Wait a minute. We talked about a benchmark. Why can't we come up with a benchmark of what it should look like across the board for every school in this district? Why can't we do that? And then we can work with equity. I'll give up. Okay, we'll talk more about it.
We agree. We talked about it. But but equity is a complex issue when it comes to that. So I believe in the way I've talked to the ASLs that we do have equity at at the most essential level, curricular and programming. So that's in staffing. So that's what I'm going, you know, that's what I'm looking at. And with this ESSER money, we can look if we can augment. We can look to see if we can augment.
Okay, we have a number of hands up. We have a number of of board members who've been very patient. Terrence Hurd, Kathy Evans, and then Jen McCosy. And the only thing I want to bring to the board's attention and and the board president's attention is that there is a $6.3 million savings in the debt service. So that at that ev- ev- avenue where we saved by refinancing joint and school contractors is in here. And also there is a $6.6 million, um, contingency account. Well, we never even had $2 million before, but we should be able to do something with equity, Dr. Cash. Thanks for ripling the money because we're probably going to need it. So, uh, Terrence Hurd, Kathy Evans, Jen McCosy, you have the floor in that order.
Okay. Thank you, um, thank you, Ms. Woods. Um, to start off, I agree with the sentiments of President, um, Belton Kotman. And we have a whole community groups and and parents that has the exact same concerns that's that's contacted us on daily basis about about music programs, about equity in the buildings, um, uh, coaches. So that's something like you said later on, we can talk about that we should really, um, sit down and iron out. Um, but question, another question that I have is, um, basically on our, the schools' debts. Um, is what percentage of, um, debt is is the schooling that we're paying out right now? And is the interest that's being collected on, um, on services that we rendered? So i- is there some way? My my thought is that we could use some of the funds to, um, alleviate the debt that the school is under so we don't pay extra interest on anything that's borrowed.
Did you say a specific school, Mr. Hurd? Did I miss that?
I didn't say a school. I said the districts.
Oh, the district.
The district debt. Yes, sir.
Mr. Barnes, do you, do you under, do you have an answer?
Not, not a great one, but the debt is repaid currently under a fairly aggressive schedule. We're paying some of it off, thus the savings this year. And we do undergo periodic refinancings.
Okay. Uh, what's the total amount of debt that the district is in? And how can we use these funds to alleviate that debt so we don't pay any more interest on borrowed monies?
Uh, uh, let me provide you an answer tomorrow. It involves other funds other than the general fund. But I I have your question. I will get back to you tomorrow for sure.
Okay.
And Mr. Hurd, well, let me have it. Let me add a little bit to that, Mr. Barnes. Thank you for that. Um, we just, we just received a 24, maybe $26 million debt, uh, refi. So by continuing to refinance, uh, from this $1.4 billion investment in these beautiful schools that you have, um, that money comes back and we put it back into the schools, uh, Mr. Hurd. So there's 24.6, um, that we've just, um, managed to to do. That that's very good. That's a very good, uh, refinance, uh, effort there. And then periodically, I can think of at least three good examples. But periodically, uh, Mr. Pritchard will come to me and say, "Staff is recommending that we, um, pay off this particular debt in now." It's it's got two more years on it, got three more years on it. But if we pay it now, Dr. Cash, because we have the, uh, money, we have the the money, uh, in, you know, that will go into fund balance. We've done well this year, whatever year it is. And if we pay off, uh, let's say $211,000 now on a, on five years remaining, four years remaining on a lease, for example, we save $300,000 in interest. See, $150,000 in interest. And so, um, Jeff has done that recently for three, in the last year and a half, three examples like that that saves us money. So so I guess in short, what I'm saying is that staff do look at, uh, the staff in budget and fiscal opportunities to pay off, to pay off loans, to pay off debt and save those that those interest dollars. Uh, and and when we have that opportunity and we have the the dollars to do it, uh, nine times out of ten, uh, you know, we'll greenlight that and 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 bring it to you. So so there is an ongoing effort to do that. I don't think, I think you're right to do it, absolutely bring it to our attention. But we do do it. And it's not something that's not part of our conservative and, uh, three, three basic things that we do try to do all the time. Where can we save dollars? Where can we avoid cost? And where can we generate revenue? Those are the three main principles that we try to run, uh, the district's fiscal affairs by. And 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 as part of that, won't say it's the only reason, but as part of that philosophy of operation that we have, that's why you see the district in such a good fiscal condition even be with before ESSER and ARPA comes into play, in a very good position. So now with that and going forward, um, you know, I'm frugal by nature. Uh, we'll start to, we we can loosen a little bit, uh, more and we, and we, and we'd be happy to do so to to make sure the kids get what they need. Make sure the kids get what they need.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I just think that, you know, we can try to pay off some or maybe get some line items on debts on that's out there, you know, to the board so we can actually take a look and see where we can, you know, pay some off and, um, stop getting that reoccurring interest charges, you know, that's eating up monies that that's needlessly that we don't need to put out. Um, I think that'll be a great start with this district. And I know you said you had been doing things like this. You have brought things to the board about paying things off. So we do appreciate that. But if we can get some type of line items so that we can actually, um, visually see it, then maybe we can work to try to get some down.
Absolutely. That's what we do. Jeff, Jeff will be happy to bring that to you at a, at a subsequent, um, finance and ops meeting. How about that? At at one, um, we'll make that an item and, uh, do it then. That'd be a good time to do it.
Kathy Evans Brown. Kathy Evans Brown.
Thank you, Chairman Woods. I believe Dr. Cash answered my question because my question wa- was when we vote on this budget, um, would it include the ESSER dollars? And you answered that it would not.
Will not.
Right. Um, but I do concur with, uh, Sharon and Larry when you talk about resources for children, um, attendance teachers, guidance counselors, and reading teachers. Reading teachers to me is personal. Um, this board has heard me talk about an experience, um, that I had personally as a first grader. Um, and I am a product of the Buffalo Public School System where I was having difficulty reading. And the teacher at that time said to my mother that, you know, Kathy's having difficulty. We need to, you know, keep her in first grade, et cetera. And I worked with a reading teacher for some time and became an Abbott, uh, a reader, you know, after that time. So I really think reading teachers are critical, uh, to our students. When we talk about, uh, now I'm going down in the trenches because some of you board members aren't in the trenches. But we know that many of our young people are living in kinship homes. So they struggle with either working with, you know, their grandparents, their aunts, their uncles, et cetera. And often these kids, you know, I've never heard of it, but it does happen when you have a nine-year-old running stuff in the house, you know, saying, "I'm not going to school," and they don't go. So we have a number of of, uh, children who are lost in this system. So that's where the attendance teachers come in at. That's where these assessments are critical. We need to somehow, as a board, know where our kids are today. Um, and then lastly, I know that ESSER is mandating 20% of those funds to go, um, to the kind of students I'm talking about. So this is all, you know, when we talk about equity. Equity don't look like it does in this budget. But when you talk about getting in these trenches with these kids, we got a lot of work to do. And we want to, you know, continue to get on the map and help our kids to be, um, you know, uh, better citizens and know how to read and write when they come out of our grade.
I agree. Thank you.
Oh, okay, I guess more people have been looking at these school-based budgets because you're going to get a bunch of questions. We have Jen McCosy.
Uh, before Jen goes, um, and lastly, I would like to have more time. We need more time, uh, to talk about budget issues. And I would be willing to give up some of my time next week, um, in the student achievement, um, uh, session. So thank you.
If, uh, and traditionally, we've had, when we've had questions, uh, on budgets, we've had specific meetings so that the board can go over the budget and the final versions. And if you see like my school lost two people, which I will be bringing to you, Dr. Cash, they went down, Montessori. Uh, if we have questions, we can have a budget meeting and take time so that everyone's approving what their schools need. And because each of us, again, is reshaping the vision for our school, this is a great opportunity. Um, I'm sure if we need to, we can have and schedule, as we've done in the past, a budget meeting. It won't be taking from somebody else.
Absolutely.
Okay, hi, everybody. So my question is more of a clarifying question. I know we've talked about this before, but I want to be able to just be clear. I know, um, site-based management teams, SBMT teams, they make the decisions for the schools. I'm wondering, and this is going kind of, I think it's kind of touching on where other folks are coming from. When you review them as a district, is it just, okay, this is what the the schools need and we just do what they say they need? Or do we, if we recognize that there's inequities based on what they bring to the table for us to decide on, do you step in and at least ask the question, why, what, you know, why is it that you don't have as many reading teachers? Why didn't you, you know, um, uh, ask for certain, you know, you, you're missing a science teacher? And if it's because of funding issues, and and I'm asking this because I'm receiving quite a bit of texts right now, um, if it's due to funding issues, then do we, with equity being, you know, our sole kind of, uh, attention span here, do we look to make sure that these schools have what they need to have the essential pieces in place? Because to me, it seems like there's just this a lot of back and forth around, we don't have this teacher, some people have this and some don't. Where do we as a district step in and say, okay, every school is in need of at least one reading teacher. I see you don't have one. Um, why is it that we're doing this instead? Can we help you with this? Not so much, we're going to take from here in order to make sure you have this.
No.
Do we provide, you know, do, do we step in on that level? Or are we just right now, uh, you know, whether COVID or whatever? I'm hoping that I can just get clarity that we do review these in a major way, that we do set. I I'm not saying apart because every school is different. We all know that. But we're all saying the same thing, reading teachers, attendance teachers, things like that. So when do we as a district step in and say, some of these things are missing and where can we help you? And do we, um, you know, you gave us your deal, your, your, your plans, your decisions. In the next month, we're going to make sure you have that and maybe this because other schools have this. You see what I'm saying? I see that there's like a gap in how, just the communication of how that, um, how that happens or if that happens might be part of the reason that this conversation took the kind of turn that it did. So if you can just clarify to me that there is a process in place where you're reviewing and, you know, you're kind of stepping in, looking for, you know, I don't, I see you don't have this and it's essential or we, the community wants to see this. Does that process happen? Or are we just like, all right, this is what you're looking for. Here you go. And and, you know, I I just need more clarity and I I need more just, um, I guess I just need more, uh, not not even clarity, but proof that that's being done because it's not clear to me that we have a review process in place. That's that's significant. That's really asking those hard questions. I've heard a lot about this is what the schools want. I want to make sure, since the district is the one that's going to be under fire, you're under fire and the board gets under fire when certain schools don't have and inequities are being called out. You know, what are we doing along those lines to make sure that we we cover ourselves in that area?
Yeah, well, I thought we had a process. Maybe we don't. Jim, what is our process?
Uh, I'm going to defer this one to Maria who runs this process from beginning to end, including the review.
Yeah.
Hi, good evening. So I can explain the process. So, um, I calculate the allocations and the budget, send it out to the school. So the school community, um, itself meets through their school-based management team meetings. And they work through, you know, what the school community feels their specific needs are that year to the school. And then they submit it. Once it gets submitted, every subject area director and supervisor, um, as well as major grant managers, um, myself and all the associates of school leadership meet at the school-based budget meetings. And we literally review every line as I enter it into the book. And if a subject area director or supervisor has a question about, uh, music or do you have enough phys ed or or anything like that? Um, you know, we have a discussion with the school and with their associative school leadership. So literally every line is reviewed as part of the process with all subject area directors, um, curriculum people, as well as the associates of school leadership. And then at the conclusion, after everything is discussed, um, the associate approves the budget. And then after that, if the associate feels that there is a need that wasn't met through the basic allocations, they ask the superintendent, um, to use, you know, some of his contingency or set-asides. And then he reviews all of those and approves or doesn't approve. And and, um, and so that accounts for, uh, things you can't account for in the, in a basic, uh, formula allocation. That's how we, how we, um, you know, account for those things. But I can assure you, it is reviewed.
Thank you. I mean, just you explaining that process clears up a lot for me. So then the only real questions I have based on what you're seeing is once that process of everyone reviewing it from all the departments and the recommendations are brought up to the superintendent, Dr. Cash, is there any, um, is is there any kind of, you know, from your standpoint, is there any kind of, okay, if you see something is missing, we have to work on this? Or is it based on, you know, it, I I don't know. I'm just, I'm missing why we're having, um, some essential staff not in schools. And I'm not saying it's because we're dropping the ball or whatever. I'm just seeing that there's, I just need to be explained. Like, if it's not there and, you know, when it comes to you or when it comes to the ASLs, you know, why wouldn't we make sure that these places, these, these, these essential staff are not in the buildings? And that doesn't have to be answered now. I just wanted to make sure I put that out there, but I I.
No, we're going to answer. Those are good questions, Jim. We're going to answer. We're going to answer them. Go ahead, Brad, Darren.
Absolutely. Because a lot of times, what we on the outside think of, or seem to, um, position ourselves to think of essential staff, might not be essential for every school, right? So I know attendance teachers are, are talked about a lot. Many schools have moved away from attendance teachers because they get a bigger bang for their buck out of hiring a social worker. So just because you don't see an attendance teacher in the building, and you think, oh, attendance teacher is so necessary, absolutely not, not in every school, because this school might need a social worker, and that's where, during their school-based budget meetings, those discussions were had. So I just ask that we please make sure that we have that in the back of our minds, that the principals, who are the heads of their buildings, have done a lot of work with their school-based management teams, and with their associates of school leaderships, to get these school-based budgets where they're at. And it's not, uh, I can't afford this, so I can't have it. Because as Dr. Cash has already said, when that comes up, there have been a number of requests that he has already approved, right? So I want to make sure we have all those things in the back of our minds when we're talking about school-based budgets.
I, I really needed you to put that out there, too. Thank you very much, because I don't want to come across as if I'm being, you know, ignorant to what principals are doing in their schools. I totally believe in the SBT, SBMT, uh, teams. It's just, you know, this, this, this confusion. So is a social worker and an attendance teacher kind of an equivalent thing? Or do you need one or the other? Like, I, I believe that's kinda where, you know, the misinterpretation is, and the narratives change, right? If, if one school has an, a, a attendance teacher, and one school has a social worker, is that an inequity? Like, you know what I mean? Like, these things kinda need to be, I guess, spelled out, and that's why I'm digging into it now publicly, but I would love to be able to just talk more about this. I appreciate the re, thank you so much, Ms. Wood, about, um, going over the review process. It really helped out a lot. So I'm going to leave this alone, we're already over time, but I would love to be able to talk more about this, because-
Well, let me just add, let me just add, because it's a great discussion, it really is. And there's a, but I tell you, we, we get into it at the cabinet level as well, because not everybody agrees, because many of us are well researched. We, we study all the time, we're, we're scholars in the field, and we know kinda what the latest studies and research is saying about A, B, C, and D. And so we'll bat it around in our cabinet meetings about things like, uh, reading teachers, uh, attendance teachers, um, other kinds of positions that, on the surface, it would look like that's a no-brainer. Our kids need that. But what, the way we come at it is, literacy skills need more support. They need to be better and more strongly developed. Numeracy skills are basic, and they need to be better supported and more developed. Our students' psychoemotional health and well-being, and their mental health and well-being. You know, we come at it, like you've said before, Jen, a whole child perspective, whole child. Every aspect of the child's development, we're interested in, and we want to grow and support, and make sure we don't overdo one thing at the cost or expense of all these other aspects of child development. So, so yeah, we have those conversations, we try to get it right, and we ask the principals that, look, you have an administration that supports whole child development. So if you have needs that we haven't talked about, or haven't thought about, that you would like to request, then, and you can support it, you feel you have programmatic capacity to support for it, then let's, and let's go for it. Let's, let's see what we can do. And in particular, a year like this, because we haven't always had this kinda latitude in our budgets, because remember that graph, and I keep bringing you back to that. When we, when we, when our population dwindles, and our staffing continues to grow, sort of exponentially grows larger and larger, that is the very definition of a structural deficit. And so you don't want to just, because of the interests and needs, and because you think that, or you've heard from, and, you know, you want to add people, 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 that at some point, you won't have to pay for that. You will have to pay for that in a way that you probably can't sustain or even afford. But in terms of the essential supports to our children right now, we probably don't disagree on, on what the kids need, and on what equity means, and what it looks like. But I really want us to put it up for you, so you can see what we've done, and what we're still committed to doing, so that the children have what we call best-in-class education. Best-in-class. I don't want it second to any school system anywhere in this country. And Buffalo's poised to be able to do that. And we've given a lot over, over these five years, that is much different than what it was. But we now, if there's areas that we can say, we all agree on, and we agree on, then absolutely, let's rejoin that conversation. And I think with ESSER funds and ARPA funds, we still will be able to do some of these things. The idea of reading teachers, I'm not against reading teachers, but you have to have a good reading teacher. And, and they have to be well-credentialed, uh, to teach, to teach our children. And that's one of the things I want to have in higher education, because I don't see higher education around in this region right now producing reading teachers. See, it's a gap. So this is the kinda thing that is, is sometimes can get a little more complicated, uh, on the surface of it. But we, but we agree, the literacy skills always will need extra support, uh, in our district. So let's just keep this going, and I don't think we're going to be, uh, off when, when it all comes to it, you know? Take as much time as you need to have the meetings you need to get it the way you feel comfortable, uh, about it for your schools. I'm with you.
Well, I want to thank Mr. Byrnes for his excellent research, answering questions, your presentation in detail. Thank you for letting us know this is still a definite work in progress. Thank you, Dr. Cash. We do have another committee meeting. Thank you, state, uh, fellow board members for all your questions, because we do love our schools, and we must put our input in. So that ends Finance and Ops.
All right, everyone.
Yes, I believe it is, um, Lou, your committee next?
It is. Thank you, uh, uh, thank you, Board Member Woods. At this point, I just wanted to start off by, uh, taking a point of privilege and allowing, uh, Dr. Anna Rivera to make an announcement that's rather time-sensitive. So, Dr. Rivera, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Uh, all I wanted to say very briefly is that it's Cinco de Mayo, and I want to make sure that we recognize our Buffalo Latino, Latina, Latinx community for their countless contributions. Cinco de Mayo is not Mexico's Independence Day. Cinco de Mayo is the day in 1862 when a small group of Mexican soldiers took on an invading French army at the Battle of Puebla and won. It's a really important day to take, to recognize the contribution of generations of Latino, Latina, and Latinx people who have made the United States what it is today. I just wanted to make sure we recognize that. Thank you so much.
Now, that's really, really important. Thank you, Dr. Rivera, for reminding us that. We'll put, we'll put something out to that effect, uh, very soon, and also I'll make commen, make sure we mention in the brief this, this Friday. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. So we have two items of topic for tonight. The first one is going to be a discussion regarding the superintendent's end-of-year review. So we, as a board, I've been very heartened. Uh, we've had some really good discussions lately, and I'm hoping tonight we'll build upon this, uh, newfound, um, collegiality and, uh, the ability to engage in some, some, you know, it could be occasionally difficult topics, but I don't foresee this one being too difficult. So as a board member, I know sometimes I tend to overthink things, but one of the things I've been thinking a lot about is the superintendent's, um, you know, annual evaluation, and how we're going to do it in this year like no other. I mean, this is a very different year. And many of the traditional things that we would have used to evaluate a superintendent simply aren't there. I, I mean, they're, they're, they're not. So many of the benchmarks, many of the things that we would look towards just aren't there. And when we had some initial discussions, you know, about trying to use the traditional matrix, there were so many, like, narratives and addendums and, uh, you know, disclaimers that, in my humble opinion, it didn't make the tool particularly effective. So in the tradition of Buffalo being on the leading edge of so many different things, I'm proposing that we do something a little bit different this year. Because I, I really wanted a document that fully encapsulated, encompassed all the various unique challenges we've had this thing, and all the various hard things that we've asked the superintendent and his staff to rise to over and over and over again. Um, and I wanted a way to encapsulate that, not only for ourselves, uh, but one thing that, that these documents do as well, is that they're a basis for future boards, future district staff, future superintendents to use as a reference. So hopefully, not within our lifetime, but heaven forbid, something like this happens in the future, they can look back at this year and say, hey, what did the Buffalo Board of Education do when they faced this challenge? Well, they were able to do X, Y, and Z. Uh, here's where the board's commentaries, here's what they, the board felt was really good and positive, here's what the board felt things could have done a little bit differently. So what I'm proposing is that, instead of the annual superintendent's evaluation, that we do kind of a superintendent's year-end summary and review, and that we allow the board, not allow, allow is a horrible choice of words, I apologize for that, but that we incorporate the board's commentary as to, you know, what went well, what didn't, um, you know, to get this document, again, that, that's a really, that's a, uh, truly a evaluative, uh, document as to where we are as a district. Um, and because there were good things that we learned, there, there were things this year that were absolutely, um, um, terrible that I would not want to repeat anytime soon. Uh, but there are also things, I think, that we learned from that could be a basis for, um, some future, um, educational methodologies, platforms, that, that maybe we've identified best learning practices for different populations of students within the district. Uh, there are things that I think that we can learn from this experience to be a better district. But again, that, that a lot of this, I don't believe would have been, uh, incorporated by the traditional evaluation document. So, um, that is what I'm presenting to the board tonight for discussion. I've had some preliminary, uh, discussions on a conceptual, uh, level, um, but I, I did want to kind of bring it forth as we kind of end the, the, as we begin to get towards the end of the academic year, um, to propose something different in this year like no other.
Lou, if I could-
Yes, Dr. Cash.
Darren, um, if you could help me, we, we would've been, you know, trying to get ahold of you lately, so we could understand what this line meant. What I, what I thought you had explained to Darren was that you would allow superintendent and staff to present a report to you, that in effect was the year-end review, across the major operations of the district, and including the alignment to our plan for this year, our, our in-person, I'm sorry, our remote learning plan, which is at the beginning of the year, and then the work that flowed systematically from that. And so that you'll get this sort of comprehensive, uh, but not long, not a, not a tone, uh, report of what, what the work, uh, entailed, what we did, what we were trying to accomplish. And, uh, you know, there's always opportunities for improvement, but it's not about, you know, what was horrible, uh, in a year where more people, uh, died in, in, in our, in our, in our lifetime, and that, and that it was a very, very trying year for everyone. Um, standards were not consistent from week to week to week. And, and I think overall, uh, it's been rather remarkable, the consistency and the systematic and the discipline that we have used to, to try to get through this year. So it's, I don't think it's a picking tool, that just, you know, whatever you think is, it happened and wasn't good, and whatever you think was, was good, it's, here's a report that you're going to get, some empirical data, some objective data, and a narrative that goes with that, uh, various data, and, and empirical. And then you, and then you have a tool to use to fill out relative to the, to the report that you're getting.
Right.
And that was-
It was very similar to-
Different. That's much different than the way you just described it, Lou. So I want to be-
I'm sorry, Dr. Cash, but I didn't incorporate that way. But, uh, no, I'm in agreement with what, what you were saying. Uh, that was kind of the basis. The, the way that I was couching is kind of at a higher-level, broader stroke, but yes, Dr. Cash, I agree with your assessment.
Yeah, it was much more similar to the major district accomplishments for 2020, 2021, and then using that, that would, you know, then that would be the basis for any evaluative tool that was used.
And, and based against children's needs, and based against academic, the academic data, for example, that we did use to try to measure progress, see? And, and, and some of the things that you did have as goals, I'm not going to go away from it, but I'm going to try to say what we had in lieu of, of that, and what progress we were able to make, and then go a lot further. So just wanted to clarify that, because while we don't have valid or accurate ELA and MATH data, which five of your seven goals, you know, we're dealing with that, and then attendance and advanced placement, graduation rate, uh, suspensions and expulsions and so forth, there still is a lot of data that we did collect, and a lot of things that we did try to do, uh, to advance that. So, so you'll have, um, a, a, a comprehensive report about those, about those issues, and then you have a document that you've been using, certainly since, since I've been here, and Darren has been instrumental in, uh, helping you tabulate, collate, and so forth. That's the document that we have at this point, to match and, and fill out according to what you read in the, in the report, and any other commentary that you would have. So, so that was the thinking, uh, at this time. And now, I'm happy to rejoin the, the discussion.
So do I have any questions? Please, you know, raise your hand, let me know. Uh, Paulette Wood, you are first.
Uh, yes, uh, my, my question is simply, um, in, in lieu of suspension data, which was, which was very important to us, to see if our children were coming to school, whether they were being fed, fed to the prisoner, uh, school-to-prison pipeline, um, the question is, do we have, the board has been asking, Kathy Evans-Brown has been asking, Dr. Evans-Brown is asking, do we have data on the number of children who actually have signed on and been in school, and where, where the lost children are? We, we, we had a report that said 45% of the, uh, kindergarteners didn't sign up. We, we had this drop. I mean, are we going to have data that says where our children? And I, I'd like to see some data on that. The other major reason for an education system is for them to actually get an education and be able to come out of school reading at, at least, you know, at an eighth-grade level, if, if not. So what actual data do we have to say where our children are? Where, what is their reading level? What have they learned? Because we're going to need that also to remediate them. So where and what is the data? I mean, I've heard a lot about KIBOS and, and, and all kind of tests. I'd like to see, in the evaluation, data telling me where the children are. It's, it's about the kids.
Yeah, we, that, that was going to be, that's a part of the report, absolutely. That's our primary responsibility. You'll see the data that we have.
Right.
You'll see the data that we have.
Any other questions? President Kotman?
Point, this stage in the game, um, whatever we, we pull together, you know, I have no qualms about it. I am concerned, and I've had this conversation with Dr. Cash recently, about what we start working on for the new year. And, uh, under New York State law, the superintendent's evaluation should be, according to Nezba, the superintendent's evaluation should be done and prepared by the end of August. And so, uh, you all know that I'm taking a course through the Council of Great City Schools about, uh, governance, and one of the items is the student evaluation. And so what I'm interested in doing is, uh, getting that, uh, getting this evaluation sort of tied up, and then working, uh, over the next several months, um, once this is done, to put together, uh, the evaluation for the new year, and, uh, to put guard- the evaluation for the new year, and to put guardrails in, to put interim goals, the superintendent determines the interim goals, the, the board determines the guardrails. And Dr. Cash is familiar with this structure. He shared with me that he has worked this previously in another school district and had very good success, because this is a student outcome-focused governance, evaluation or whatever. So he's receptive to working with us on that. And I, I think at this point, we need a policy enhancement. According to Nezba, the superintendent's got, contract should be to him by the end of August. And his contract says that it should be there by the end of September, if I remember right. But either way, the board needs to do the work over the summer to have the, and with, in conjunction with the superintendent, to make sure that we have things set up for September. And this board has never done that since I've been on it, and I've been on it for a little.
I think the law is by September the 10th, it's supposed to be in place.
Right. Well, Nezba said that, you know, something, okay, the 10th then, but Nezba said do it all by the end of September. It gives the superintendent the chance to make his adjustments and then move forward. I think Dr. Cash's contract says the 24th of September, if I remember right.
Yeah. Yeah, the reason it's addressed that way is in, in the initial year was because Dr. Dr. Cash was formally brought on in the middle of September, I believe, when he was finally certified by the state. And so that, that date was put in there for that one year only.
And then so for the board members that took a note of the, the board outcome-focused guideline that I gave you, when you're working the superintendent's evaluation, you work it from the right to left, not left to right, like we normally do. And so, you know, we can, I've talked to several board members there, they're receptive to doing it. Dr. Cash, you said you would work with us on it. And I think that we can, you know, consider this year, wrap this year up, and let's get ready for next year, is what my recommendation is, you know, after, you know, June or whatever, and with the training that we'll receive from the Council of Great City Schools. And so, you know, I don't have any qualms on how you want to move forward for this year.
Thank you, President Kotman. Any other comments? Okay. Next topic is usage of the BPS athletic fields. I know that we've had a series of emails and exchanges regarding this topic, so I asked if, for it to be put on the agenda. Dr. Cash, I'll turn it back over to you.
Yes, colleagues, thank you. So a number of questions have come up recently, and been a flurry really, about the use of Johnny B. Wiley field. And it led us to start to look at, well, how have we used that field in the past? And what is involved in getting it ready and prepared to use, particularly in a year like this one with COVID, and all of the extra safety precautions that must be in place in order to use open space, athletic fields, and so forth? And then from that conversation, a series of requests that have come in, it asked, it begged the question, well, what about all of our athletic fields? Because there will be a number of activities going on today, this, this summer. So for example, I met with Steve McDuffie and his son Isaiah today. They gave me a little Green Bay cracker hat, so don't make, don't get upset at me. But they, they're planning, they want to know how to use the fields and have things to do with kids over the summer. And, and I've had other requests like that. So, so now we, I said, oh, we got to put this on the big board. While I encouraged all of it, we got to put it on the big board, because there are many, many demands, from church groups that want to use it, to, you know, alcohol anonymous groups, to, you know, camps and summer camps and all kinds of. So Dr. Will Caressis is really good when it comes down to things like this, and, and many other things that he does. So I asked him to take the lead, take that off of Cecily's back at this point, because all the, all the, all the points go back to, well, the director of athletics or the person in charge of athletics, that's who's over the decisions about the field. And, and this week, this year anyway, I just felt that that would be a bit much for her to try to navigate while we're also going through the kind of, the kind of year in sports that we, that we're trying to get through. So I asked Dr. Caressis to take the lead. He had some overview answers about all of this, and I think it'll put us on good footing to have a systematic, if not policy approach, because I think ultimately we need a policy approach to answering these questions as they come in, one at a time, one by one, by one by one. Dr. Caressis will put it through, put it through the centrifuge and, and get responses out to the, to the requester. Okay? So Dr. Caressis, thank you for your good work on this. Turn it over to you now for your comments to the board.
Cash, good evening, board members. I'll take you just through the basics of how the district is beginning to launch a safe reopening of our facilities that we'll share with our community partners. The first thing that's a little different this year is that, beginning now, and at least through the summer and the fall, the district will be collaborating with the City of Buffalo Parks and Recreation Department, just to assure consistency and alignment in our general facilities use policies and also with our COVID-19 policies. We, we don't want community organizations that sometimes use City of Buffalo facilities, sometimes use district facilities, to get mixed messages on what's required as we're safely relaunching with COVID-19 protocols. We are considering and looking at requesting that City of Buffalo athletic permits be held by applicants. That's another layer for verifying applicants and staying consistent, and it could be helpful to us this time. In the event that applicants don't need a City of Buffalo permit because they're only interested in using our facilities, that's fine, but they will need to submit the equivalent set of materials needed for that athletic permit. At a minimum, that's going to include insurance documentation and proof of payment of a current premium, their COVID-19 plans, their security and staffing plans. And those are things that we require as well. Approval also will require a signed agreement to all of our BPS COVID-19 protocols for athletes, coaches, and spectators, as well as any other rules that we have. And that's really just a simple line that we'll be putting on the existing application, that you agree to follow BPS protocols, and we're going to make sure that our community partners have a copy of those. For Johnny B. Wiley applications, those are considered on a case-by-case basis along, you know, through the lens of the bylaws of the Johnny B. Wiley Board. There's no assurances of, of use of Johnny B. Wiley, just like there isn't for any of our facilities, until all components of an application submission are approved. So while, while there's a, there's a consistency of what's expected, it's not just an automatic assurance. The district still reserves the right to deny these applications, or certainly to advise applicants what you need to do in order to get your application approved. Coordination will continue between the plant department, the athletics department, and as Dr. Cash said, my office, and the City of Buffalo, as long as COVID-19 requirements remain in place. And we want to do that again so that we're not sending mixed messages, and no one is confused, and we're all on the same page. I, I am requesting, and I know that board members, you've tried to be helpful as, as applicants have reached out to you, but I am requesting that only staff engage with applicants, and this is to avoid, you know, misunderstandings in the requirements, or, you know, giving unintended assurances that applications are going to be approved just because you're, you're advocating for it. That may not necessarily be true. So you don't want to give that impression to, you know, valued community partners that we have. Really, the best thing to do is just advise them to contact the office that, you know, takes these applications. I, I think while we're involved in this relaunching, you could certainly have applicants contact me, and I can really take care of all of their needs in one phone call, certainly answer all of their questions. Some things are remaining the same. As always, all BPS facilities and Johnny B. Wiley are prioritized for BPS use first, then on a case-by-case basis for outside organization and leagues. There's no guarantee of approval for outside applicants, and we always reserve the right to deny all applications. The other thing that is, of course, still the same is that there aren't any exceptions to the BPS protocols or general rules for facilities use. So you want to be, again, careful with that. If, if you're approached and a request is put before you for an exception, you want to discourage that. And in fact, I, I would encourage you to not even get into that conversation, just have them contact the appropriate staff, or certainly for the time being, they can reach out to me, and I'll be able to address any of their concerns. And finally, staff is in the process of reviewing all of the current practices that the district has engaged in historically around these issues. They're going to be discussing it with their cabinet leads, and in time, cabinet members will be debriefing Dr. Cash and having a more robust discussion on, you know, are there policies that need to be updated? Is there a policy or regulation, superintendent's regulation, that should be written on this matter or updated? So all of that is to come, but I think the bottom line is, you know, Dr. Cash is, is committed to the equitable access of our facilities for the greater good of the community. That's a top priority that he has stated to us as a cabinet. So that, that's going to be our goal, to safely reopen, to create that equitable access, and to give kids the opportunity, you know, to enjoy sports and recreation on our facilities to, to the greatest extent that they can.
Thank you very much, Will. Are there any questions from any of the board members? President Kotman, your hand went up first. Floor is yours.
Oh, Dr. Caressis, so when you say that you're going to be reviewing historical patterns, are you going to be able to provide a list of all the people who are using our facilities, and what their contracts are, and our commitment to them? The reason that I'm saying that is that I recently, probably in the fall, walked All High. Our All High stadium is a mess, okay? The field and everything. And one of the promises that the board was made when they opened up, Dr. Cash, I want you to hear this, that the board was promised when they opened up that All High field to the community, to let them use it, okay, that the money that was made on the rentals would be put in a special fund to repair the field, okay? And that never happened. And so we had situations where we had outside people having more access to our field than our children. Certain colleges, we couldn't exercise, or our children couldn't use our own facility because contracts were written that included outside facility or outside organizations using it. And now, just to give you an example, I have a family member who uses All High. I walked into this house and thought that he had a mice problem because of the amount of debris that he brought home from the, from the field. It, it crumbled up. I met a meeting once with the kids, and they had it on their face. So we have a situation where people are using our facilities because we want to be generous and open it up to the community, but meanwhile, now it is time to fix it. Okay, we're stuck with the task to fix it, and we got a health problem here with our children, okay? So the point I'm trying to make here is that the previous board approved for their friends and families to basically use and abuse our fields, and we got nothing in return out of it, other than we need a new field now. So much so that I doubt if we're going to be able to place in September on that field if it's not replaced. And I'm being told that you guys are looking at that, but I know you're addressing it. So my concern is the abuse of our field, and no, and no one's monitoring it, okay? The security associated with it, and a practice that you said, that you guys say exists where, where the fees are waived. So I want to know who's paying for the waived in of the fees, because I understand that security is required every time we open that door, and that it has to be kept clean. And I want to make sure that Buffalo Public School children is not coming off of the backs of us to accommodate private institutions that are proposing themselves as public schools and other organizations, that are, that the fees are being waived and the adults are being paid anyway. I want to find out what's going on with that. Thank you.
Right. So as I told you today, as I emailed you today, President Belton Kotman, you know, all, we're going to be mindful of all of the questions you raise as staff takes a look at what the past practices have been, and we debrief with Dr. Cash in the future on these issues. But your, your questions, we will be mindful of them, and we started discussions on them already internally. So thank you for that.
If I could just add one or two things. I know that since that our fields were, because we, as part of the joint schools' construction, we did have the premier athletic fields in Western New York for a number of years. Since that time, many of the institutions that formerly used our fields have built additional facilities. So there's been a little bit less of a demand. It hasn't completely gone away, but some of these private institutions now have their own athletic fields. The, the one thing that we have that I know that has, facilities has made representation to the board previously was the lack of practice fields. So we have people practicing on, on basically game fields, which lends to its deterioration at a quicker rate or quicker pace.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Petruski, for that. You know, your point goes to the broader partnership that we've developed with the city and with the Community Foundation, through the help of the Wilson Foundation, in looking at the future of all of our collaborations on, on fields, city-owned fields, district-owned fields. And as that work continues, that is going to specifically address that challenge, because city parks, properties, city fields will be upgraded sufficiently so that they meet Section 6 standards, and they can be suitable for practice fields for varsity athletes, if not game fields, competitive game fields for, for athletes. So that, that practice field concern has been voiced for a very long time, and it is a key component of the collaboration around the Wilson Foundation work that we're doing together as a community. And by the way, it's a top, it's a top concern of the coaches. So you're, you're reflecting the sentiment that coaches have been expressing around here for years.
Thank you, Will. Terrence, do you have a question?
Yes, I do.
Terrence, and then Jen. So Terrence, and then Ms. McCozy, you will follow after Mr. Hurd. Terrence, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Petruski. For years, it's been an ongoing thing about Johnny B. Wiley Stadium and the usage of it. And it goes all the way back into the, all the way back to the early 80s, when it, when it was, when it was remodeled. They tore the old stadium down, and, and the new stadium was constructed, you know, it was supposed to have been for community use, usage, and Buffalo Public School usage. At that time, chains were put around the gates, and the community wasn't allowed to utilize that facility. Pre-COVID, it's an area where community thought, excuse me, community thought they can use the track to, to have a safe place where they can go jogging, or using the facility for community use. And the community fought vigilantly. I remember Charlie Fisher and others, you know, went, cut the, cut the chains off the gate so that the community got access to it, because it was kept away from the East Side community here in Buffalo. If you right past it now, you can see people that's not from the community utilizing this field for baseball games, soccer games, and other events, which it should be used for as, as a field. And I have great concerns about the usage of the field, and who will be allowed, who will not be allowed to use this field. I reflect the opinion by myself and the community when I say that I would like to see the list of people who are allowed to use the field and not allowed to use the field. of people who are allowed to use the field and not allowed to use the field because it could be some discrepancy. And that's been, I'm not saying because of this administration, but over the years, it's been overlooked about who can use the field. I know many community groups, churches, children like to use the field. The community would like to use the field as a safe place to run, jog, to exercise, to practice, to workout. And I look at other new facilities that's built, you know, around the city and suburban Buffalo where they have workout areas and stuff like that. And I was wanting to ask earlier about, we're waiting for this to come up so that we can try to put some of those things in that park over there so that the community can use it for exercises, doing push-ups, sit-ups, stretching, and et cetera. So we really need to look at that field, see how we can revamp that field, and actually add some other extra things to it so that it could be useful to the community and open that field up to the community. Now, we have been many incidents over at that place. It's been used very in large capacities for football, little league football games, high school, and so on, and also baseball. And we got coaches here that want to, you know, teach younger kids how to play baseball at a younger age and utilize that field also, and soccer. So so many things that that field could be used for that it hasn't been used for, that it's been neglected to, but being saved, you know, for certain group of people to be able to use that field in the East Side of Buffalo. I thank the district, you know, we worked hard, and we had many conversations, Mr. Kressi, about a charter using the field for sectional championship games. And the district did open up and allow for them to use that field for Health Science. And I really thank the district, you know, for opening the doors for them. They used that field last year, and they don't have a home team. And but those kids that using that field, you know, for Health Science Charter School is a reflection of this community. They live in that area. They grew up around there. And how would you feel if you grew up in the area and you got a big gate around a park that you cannot use? It shows a huge inequity. And I would like to see a more of a stance of opening up that field, that area over there so that it could be useful, community use for community programs and advances. So for exercise and other things, and summer programs for our children. I would like to see what type of summer programs be used in that facility and how we can go ahead and try to make it more applicable for like lunch programs, summer lunch programs, and move so on. All High Stadium, President Cotman reflected on that earlier, and the field is atrocious. I played on football fields my entire life, and the field is a huge danger because it's slippery. You can get grip on there with your cleats because the turf is worn down and has dents inside the field, which is a hazard when someone's running, running for a pass or tackling, which can be a huge issue with tripping ankles, ankle injuries, and so on. So yes, it is a hazard, and things need to be upgraded there. I don't know what the price would be, but I know you said last year that the district was looking into finding a method to, and resources to change the field over there. And we can get a report on that sometime in the near future, how we can go about that and see where we go with that. So I'm going to yield my time now. I just wanted to go back on the historical usage of that field, Johnny B Wiley Stadium, and how it's a gated-off entity in the community to where most means you go into, you go into a park area or a football area or a play area, and there's no gates around, there's no, it's open access to those fields, and which this here is more like a prison-like setting to where it's chambered off from everyone else.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. I appreciate your comments. And I too am interested in the usage list of who has been granted access to Johnny B Wiley, you know, over the years. So I will be asking for that. The one thing I do want to remind you of, though, is remember, Johnny B Wiley is a shared community asset. There is an independent board that has its own bylaws that sets the rules for usage. And although the district is charged with the management of that facility and we staff it for the cleaning and maintenance, and then the city is charged with, you know, the capital improvement side of it, that is all based on what an independent board has fashioned with its own bylaws. So, I mean, to your point, though, it should probably get a fresh look. But please don't make the assumption that the school district is responsible for locking it up and making it look like a prison. That's just completely untrue. I do know that recently, members of the independent Johnny B Wiley Board have reached out to the district and said, can we begin looking at some of the sections of the agreement? And I know that Mr. Kuzma will be, you know, setting the ball in motion to collaborate and get some of that done, and maybe some of the things you're talking about can be reviewed. But, you know, don't just assume that the way something looks is the responsibility of the district because it isn't. And at Johnny B Wiley, that is a shared facility, an independent board. We are part of a collaborative team that, you know, over the years, has to negotiate the use of Johnny B Wiley. But I think in the end, everyone wants the same thing. We want what's in the best interest of students, athletes, community members who just want to, you know, enjoy a really important recreational asset in Buffalo. So we'll get there, and I think your input is helpful. But I just wanted to remind you just to be careful that it is not, you know, exclusively the decision-making power of the district. It's a joint collaboration with an independent board.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Dr. Kressi. Can you name that independent board that is associated with the Fruit Belt Breakline Community Center that's there on the property?
What do you mean, name it? I don't know the names of the board members. I guess I could get that for you.
What's the name of the independent board? Who is it governed by?
It's the Johnny B Wiley Board. I'm not sure if it's got, I'm just getting into this myself. I don't know if they have a unique name or a distinct name.
Real quick, before I turn it over to Dr. Cash, I do believe that the board members, the board member, the board is Johnny B Wiley Board. I believe the composition of the board is spelled out in the city charter under the board's provision of all the various boards that the city of Buffalo has. It was when they established Johnny B Wiley, that board was established through a charter amendment. So it's spelled out, and I believe there's a 10-member board, and they have the terms, and they're replaced and they're rotated. But yeah, it's been around for a while. Dr. Cash, the floor is yours.
Yes, colleagues, I wanted to sort of remind some of you that were here, some of you are new and haven't been here, but I fully agree with the vision, Mr. Hurd. I really do agree and fully support the vision of what you were talking about with the community and all of the activities that can happen, you know, healthy Buffalo, everybody in that community walking the track and meeting on weekends and the things like you see all over many suburbs. But that was the vision of why we wanted to resurface 12, 12 of our city parks and fields. And so we had a very ambitious ask. We had a long working group for about a year. And Wilson Foundation was poised to fund and support the resurfacing of 12 fields across the city. And for the Johnny B Wiley area, we talked about a multi-plex sports complex that had different levels, even indoors down to an underground sports facility that might include tennis and racquetball and football and baseball underground, sort of like, we had, it was very ambitious what we were talking about. Now, we need to rejoin that, and that's part of that reason that I had to lead it at some years ago. David Mauricio, Annabell Solar, you know, they were the kind of people that go get things done. And so that's where we're trying to rejoin those discussions, getting Wilson off the dime, getting that done. So that all of these fields, including the city honors, what we call it, Lou, Fosdick Maston Field.
Fosdick Field.
That's in the plans, too. That's in the plans, too, to remodel that field and have it state-of-the-art right there. We're ready to go. The mayor has given his approval now. So we don't hang up with that street because part of that was how that street was going to be handled over there. And of course, that was served the Fruit Belt and the surrounding community, very historic Fruit Belt. So we are very excited about this, and I can assure you that we're going to put an extra set of enzymes into this athletic field effort this year coming, this year coming. We're going to be all over this. So the vision is correct. We're not trying to hold up anything. Let's open up the gates, metaphorically. Let's open up the gates. But let's make sure, though, that we also, and this is where I'm strong on this, I'm about equal accountability, equal accountability, right? So we want you to enjoy it, but like I always say, if you come to my house, you found it. See? Leave it like I found it. If I rent to you over the summer and you tear it up, then I go right down to the person that rents for me through the business. I say, don't rent to them again. I don't want them in my house again, okay? So we got to treat these fields with respect once we do do all of this good work. And we want everybody to partake of it, use it, and then that'll go a long time for community health and wellness. And I want to start an initiative with you as a board, Terrence, and you can lead it, called, you know, Healthy Buffalo 2030, 2030. Because coming out of COVID, you know, a lot of us overweight, a lot of folks, you're talking about push-ups, stop it. Let's see if we can walk 500 steps. Let's start there, and then we'll work our way up to push-ups. But my point is that we can do something with the whole community, the whole city community, where we walk for a cause, see? Let's walk five miles, 10 miles, end up back at Johnny B Wiley, for example. And then all of these activities and things like, you got, we got to get healthy again. We got to get healthy physically, mentally, psychoemotional, relationship abuse, domestic abuse, gun violence, too much violence in this city, pound for pound. And these are venues where we could have, you know, sponsor these events and then go raise money for it. So I'm with you on that vision and much, much more. And let's do it, make it a commitment in the coming year.
Thank you, Dr. Cash.
Thank you, Dr. Cash.
Can I have one more question, please?
Sure, sure, Terrence.
Okay. I believe that last year, we did go over to Ralph Wilson Foundation and the redevelopment of the parks, which they put a very good presentation on during the Education Support Committee meeting. And All High Stadium, I don't believe was included in that, in those plans.
Yeah, All High is in it.
Is it now? Okay. Just want to, just to get that clarity.
Yeah, they're in it, absolutely.
Okay. But they receive preference because of the danger that it could pose if a bad plan area about getting done first?
Right here. But certainly we'll consider it because that's our premier field. So I think it's got to be a do-now, you know?
Okay.
And I'll even ask you this, if, because these things run about 500, 600,000, if the board wants, if we can do a, we look at it, I think we ought to pull it out of the Wilson project and go ahead and see if we can get it done, you know, with some of these funds that we see coming in. Let's try to get it, move it to the top of the queue and get it done. I'm certainly looking into that tomorrow. I'll start looking into that tomorrow.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. That'd be great.
You know, when you're talking about 12 fields, you're talking about a major philanthropy, you know, they tend to go slow while they go, before they go fast. So I just don't want to lag when that's a major field. Let me see what we can do to get that done sooner.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Ms. McCozy, I saw your hand up. Do you have some questions?
I don't know if it's so much a question as it is a comment. And just clarification's sake, Will, so you're saying that we're partnering with the city with city fields, the BPS fields, Wilson Foundation. What I want to make sure happens, which hasn't happened, and, you know, I coach softball, I'm in different parks myself, a lot of input when it comes to city fields isn't really being asked of the community. It's being asked of folks that do, you know, their backyards butt up against the park. But, you know, we're missing out, our students are missing out, you know, I don't want to point out parks and all of that, but we have significant funding going into a city park that has ample soccer, baseball, football, softball, all these fields. There's two dog parks with water fountains for each one of those dog parks, but there isn't a single water fountain for the students. There is a snack stand that has been there forever that's being utilized for garbage cans. And I'm bringing my girls into the Burger King to use the bathroom because there's one or two, you know, facilities that, you know, porta-potties that are left there when we have a building that has bathrooms in it. So I'm wondering if we're going to partner, when you talk about equity, Dr. Cash, and making sure that you push on these conversations?
Yeah.
We need those city parks, too. So yes, if they're going to invest in our parks, in our fields, and they're going to do all this, 100%. But we, as a district, with students in mind, which outweigh a lot of numbers of community folks that are going to come in, they're made up of these students of the BPS, they should be given, and we should be pushing for the city parks to make sure that our students have, you know, these ample practice fields within the city parks. And that, not we're prioritized above everybody, but we should, if we're working in tangent with each other, it should be, you know, we should look at it as priority to a point. And I'm just frustrated with how community meetings are put together when, you know, the folks who are really part of those processes, like we're losing fields. And you're losing, you know, you're losing interest from students and outside, you know, in the leagues that are happening in the summer and outside of school that are helping to get kids geared up for sports within the schools. You know, it's a continuum. If you're playing, if you're playing baseball in little leagues since you're playing T-ball, you want to go into baseball into school. You know what I mean? Modified sports, now school, now Unified Sports. It all ties together. So if we're going to push hard, I'm just hoping that we don't do, you know, there's no okie-doke here. We need to make sure that we have just as much voice, parents and stakeholders and everybody included, when it comes to our city parks, as they will have into our fields. And I just, you know, I'm sorry, it's not soapboxing, but it's a perfect opportunity to bring that up. And if someone has an issue with that, they can come to me. They know where to reach me because we've talked about it before.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great idea. And I think as board members, I would certainly encourage you to get information from the community on the use of these fields. That's the best way to get it. And then you bring it to us, bring it to community committee meetings, bring it to work sessions. This is what we're hearing about how these fields could be better utilized, what other amenities you could include so that everybody will use them and feel safe and so forth and so on. Absolutely. So keep bringing us your ideas. I mean, if we don't have water fountains, that's basic, you know? That's basic. And...
Yes, it is. Thank you very much.
Let's take care of that. So, all right. That's good feedback, and we'll put that into your rotunda, okay?
Any other questions for Will and his rotunda?
Just for board members and Dr. Cash, Dr. Evans Brown said she had server issues and couldn't get back on the meeting, just to let you know. She said she didn't drop off on purpose.
Okay, I'm having server issues. I'm getting ready to, I can feel it coming. I'm having server issues.
Well, real quick, before we go, Dr. Cash, I received a couple texts and emails. I know that Unified Sports has been in the paper. Are you or your staff prepared to give an update tonight, or is that a topic for next Wednesday?
Yeah, real quick. Yeah, colleagues, thank you. So look, Dr. Ann Rivera, and let's see, Nate Kuzma, these are people who must have known me since I was a little boy, right? Because they know sort of my temperament and all of that. And so they spoke to my mom, who's deceased, and she told them, this is the best way to go in and talk to Dr. Cash. And so Ann was terrific. She explained the program that I really didn't know much about. I'd only recently heard about it. She explained what the purpose of it is, who it is intended to serve, and, you know, asked some questions. and, you know, asked some questions. And even though it is late in the hour of all of this, I said, look, what I'm going to do, I'm going to make some calls and see if we can do something this year to the best of our ability. Because the season has started on Monday, she gave me a little bit of a compromised area just in terms of recruitment and the students and doing all of the prep work that's needed. I mean, while, and I was concerned about scheduling because the season has started, I meanwhile had staff make a call to Section Six who said, because they said, Dr. Cash means this, his board is coming at him unified on this matter, no pun intended. And that it's one of the things they actually agree on. So that's a good thing. So the guy down in section, section, whatever, Section Six said, we'll work them in. We can work them in. If you can get a team fielded, we'll work them into a schedule. So long story short, I'm going to have staff start tomorrow. There are some concerns I do have from operational standpoint at this point. Dr. Rivera knows some of it, but she's going to have some ideas. She's going to help best she can. She's going to work with with some of the staff. So because they're new at this, and we're going to try to, we're going to feel, feel, try to get this done for the teams that have them. Now, going forward, though, there are some equity issues. We talk about it as equity. I'm concerned about broadening the concept of equity because it seems to me that all schools ought to at least have an opportunity to play in something like Unified Sports as I'm learning about what it is. So that's not just two programs. That should be all across the system. And then secondly, are there other sports that maybe fit the bill that we could start to offer Unified Sports next year? Because right now, I think it's basketball and bowling. So those are some things that we're certainly interested in. I have staff already planning that out for next year. But for this year, I'm going to go and see, can, if we hurry up, you know, and try to put this together, that we're going to make every effort to do it. Now, I do, like I said, I have some staffing and some bus transportation, something, but that's not for you to worry about. We'll do what we can to get this launched at the latest by next week, especially if I get the help that Dr. Rivera has suggested about seniors and about juniors and so forth for this year. So I don't know if that answered your question or not, but it is in the spirit of it, I think.
It does, Dr. Cash. Remind me not to get on Dr. Rivera's bad side. I see that Ms. McCozy, former track and field star, has her hand up. Jen McCozy, do you have a quick question?
I wanted to clarify some things, too, so that you know this has been a huge conversation. I've been in contact with many folks around this. From what I gather, and I just want to give you what I've been getting, is that the three schools that currently have these teams are ready to go. Coaches are ready to go. So I think you're in good shape there. Maybe transportation might be an issue. Everybody, you know, I think that as a board, and I don't want to speak for everybody else, but I would like to see, you know, how we make this almost, you know, policy or whatever, that next season, next year, that, you're right, we need to expand. We can't do this now. I know middle college was supposed to be part of the expansion process because there was one in place pre-COVID. But it was, you know, one school or whatever at a time with this, you know, with this bit of money that we're getting. Hopefully, we'll be able to take this program and really bring it to all of the schools. Currently, right now, we have programs that, I guess, assist with, and that's why it's in these current schools, assist with this, the, the, the program, the Unified Sports Program. So the Special Olympics that funds some of this, you know, has programs that are in within these schools. What are those programs? How do they, you know, be available across the district? It's bigger than just whether or not this Unified Sports Program goes through. It has many components to it. So from who I've talked to, from who I've talked to, you know, bowling being out of the picture already, Section Six saying, you know, I know deadline's up, but we welcome you. I think that this can move really quickly, but I really would like to be assured that, and based on what you just said, Dr. Cash, I feel good about how this will look in the future. And I really would like to see, you know, efforts being made, that this isn't such a, you know, kind of hurry up rush thing, that we're on it, that everybody understands what this is, what it entails, and that, you know, there's, there's different levels to all of this. And it's not just an either or, it's an and, like you like to say. And I really, I really would like for the community to be involved in how this is, how this is pushed out in the future because there's narratives that are contradicting, and there's also real information that needs to go out there. But from what I'm seeing, like, people are ready to go. And as far as the teams, what I'm also hearing is that the teams are not, there's not a 40-person roster on any of these teams. The teams are 10 to 12 kids in general, and there are some general, like, kids in there. So going with just seniors, which to me would be, you know, why just seniors, not others, when every, you know, when you have all the grades that make up the teams, and the teams are only 10 to 15 people anyway, I feel like you might be in good shape just going with it. And then next year, you know, we just look to expand. I just wanted to give you what I know about it. I feel confident. Thank you very much for addressing it. It has been a concern. But, you know, I really appreciate how this board has been working on it and your approach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCozy. Dr. Rivera, did I see your hand?
Yes, we did. So thank you very much, Ms. McCozy, for outlining a lot of what's going on with Unified Sports. I just wanted to, for those of you who don't know, I wanted to let you know that this is a program that is extremely near and dear to my heart as my son played in Unified Basketball. And it was a life-transforming experience. He still talks about it. He had peer interactions that were critical to him. And if you will allow me, I still have my shirt. And basically, what the shirt says is what the program's about. If we are unified, if we are unified, there is nothing we cannot do. We are one. And so it's really, it's an important equity thing. And I hear what you're saying, Ms. McCozy, about seniors. I think it's just a matter of making sure that the goal would be run it, right, this semester? I can, or this, in this season, I can say as a board member, I would support that absolutely. I think we touch these, the logistics of it. And I know Dr. Cash is working that out. And I'm absolutely happy to partner with him. I'm really glad we had the conversations. And he's graciously allowed me to become a part of this. Part of what happened with Unified Sports is it started as a pilot program, and it kind of didn't take off in the way that it was supposed to. It can encompass many more sports. And it also is, it can encompass many more seasons. And I really look forward to working with staff to make sure that happens. And I really take seriously what you say about community input. That needs to happen. And it needs to happen in many different levels. So I appreciate your comment.
Put that t-shirt up one more time. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Send it, yes.
Kids got it right. Let's follow their lead.
Yeah, they do.
Very sage advice, Dr. Cash. Do you have another question, Mr. Hurd? Terrance? Terrance, I'm mute, my friend.
Thank you, Mr. Petruski. I'm glad to see that the district had made some movement, you know, as far as looking into the Unified Sports Program. As you know, for the past 17 months, the Athletic Ad-Hoc Committee has been working with the Modified Sports, Unified Sports, in which we did have had several conversations with Lou Petruski, Jennifer McCozy, and I, and met with out-of-district leaders who welcomed Buffalo as being part of Unified Sports Program to go out of the city of Buffalo, but to our neighboring districts also. And they have a very robust program, you know, that's set aside, you know, for the Unified Sports Program, which we are going to do in upcoming weeks about moving forward with the Unified Sports Program and the Modified Sports Program. So that'll be presented at a later date. But the Unified Sports Program that they invited us to also has the Unified Sports, it got participation by the parents, it got means to keep the cost down for the districts by having parent involvement, by having volunteers and coaching that you don't need, actually for certified for some of the sports, but just parents coached type teachers, you know, that helps out with these type programs. And it's a great family environment, and it's a great opportunity for these children, which actually pushes forward, you know, the efforts in education and believing in school and helping them out through education. So I'm very, very on board with Ann, you know, and moving forward with this because it's something we've been pushing for a while now. Also, with this Unified Sports Program, out-of-district schools, they have an end-of-the-year banquet also, which it was planned to us at one of the meetings. And they want our Buffalo kids to be part of that banquet. They want to be, work with us. And they felt that for years that the Buffalo School District has, has, you know, worked with these districts, you know, or have been invited, you know, to try to participate to make this collaboration. So I'm happy to see this is going forward. And I'd just like to see that Athletic Ad-Hoc Committee and also the Buffalo Athletic Department continue to work together in the near future so that we can make these plans for next year, to see where we're at with next year and direction that we're going in, and how we can afford it and move forward. Because the Unified Sports and Modified Sports run hand-to-hand also because it does stress kids' needs and address all children. As we, you know, put forward the President Bell and Combs' issue on equity, we've been undeserving for years in this district, undeserving for decades. And it's something that this district inherited, you know, from past, from past leadership. And it's a problem that we have to address and we have to fix. We have to find a way so we can be inclusive for all our children because this is very important, not only for our future, for these kids to believe in education. And we've seen the fall off, you know, for some of our kids in grades this year itself, kids who weren't able to participate in sports and the hunger for virtual learning and, and, you know, and that type of, you know, being at home and away from their own peers, how it affected them in their grades. So that's something we're working forward, like Dr. Cash, and hoping that we can reestablish our efforts with the Athletic Department moving forward and planning for next year.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Ms. Rivera, your hands, Dr. Rivera, your hand went up again. Do you have a response?
I do. I just want to say thank you, Mr. Hurd. You're correct that Unified Sports is really, really important. And it creates a lot of integration. And I can say myself, having attended those banquets in the past, which Buffalo has done, as well as gone to other, other, other games, other schools. We went everywhere for a while. It was a road trip in my family, but it was amazing. And parents are out, community members are out, cheerleaders are there, there's music. I cannot tell, like, I get teary still. This is not, this is not a little thing in my family. We had recognition. My son gave a speech one year. In a couple of the teams, some graduates of the program came back and helped coach the team. This thing that you're talking about, about supporting, about equity, about the ways in which our students are recognized and engaged, all of that is absolutely true. And I really look forward to seeing us be able to continue a program that has been successful in the same format this year and expand it for next year. And I really want to advocate for that. And Dr. Cash has graciously indicated that expanding next year Unified Sports is definitely on the table. Because the other thing that I can tell you is our athletes with disabilities and their general education, neurotypical peers, really need support, and it needs to be done really, really well for them. And so we want to make sure of that, too. And hopefully, I'll be speaking more with the Athletic Ad-Hoc Committee as well as we move forward with this. I hope you'll welcome me on that.
All right.
Thank you, Ann. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Scott?
I'll be real quick. Everything that should have been said has already been said. And I just want to thank everybody for their advocacy on this. It's the right decision, and I appreciate, Dr. Cash, you reconsidering and understanding the importance to provide this opportunity to these students. I coach two baseball, or three baseball teams right now. And as you mentioned, Dr. Cash, our kids are craving this physical activity, and they're craving the social, emotional interaction. And so these students that participate in Unified Sports should be guaranteed that same opportunity, just like our other students. So I hope they have this opportunity to participate this year. And it sounds like there's a door open with Section Six, and we're talking about basketball for this, this year, for this spring, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott, for your comments. Ms. Woods, Paulette, do you, your hand went up. You have a comment?
I just want to say what a difference the athletic recognition and the sports have made to my nephew, who is, I'm trying to save him from the streets in trouble. So I am so proud of listening to this effort to do the Unified Sports. Thank each of you guys for supporting it because I don't say much, but you're talking about little kids, my nephew's, oh, I'm trying to save. And it's making a difference. It's really making a difference.
Thank you, Board Member Woods. Any other questions or comments? I see Terrance is applauding. Terrance, I think we're all in agreement with your applause. Do, I know it's at nine o'clock. We've had many hours of robust discussion. Thank you, fellow board members. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Jen McCozy and a very animated Paulette Woods seconds it. So at this point, we are adjourned. Thank you all for your attendance and participation this evening.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.